Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of April 22, 2024. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
King.
Here.
Sage is absent. Trent.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, this beautiful night. We are going to go to public comment. And first, if you were here to enjoy the Oakland University basketball team, you're out of luck tonight. They had to cancel at the last minute. I think they're coming to the next meeting. So, yeah, we were all ready with our Golden Grizzlies stuff. But, not that it's not as important, we have a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce, President Maggie Bobbitts regarding Memorial Day events. Maggie, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Bixson, Mayor Protem Salvia, City Manager Banda, and City Council. My name is Maggie Bobbitts, and I am the President of the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce. The Rochester Regional Chamber Foundation has been helping to execute the Memorial Day Parade of Heroes on Memorial Day since 2019. But the parade has been going on much longer with the help of community volunteers. This year, our local communities have planned many events to honor our fallen heroes on Memorial Day. We have planned these events so the residents in our communities can attend all of the events, pick the ones they would like to have to attend, and have time to head back and fire up the barbecue. The Sister City Committee contacted me to discuss plans for the 2024 parade back in November of last year. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank Councilman Debbie Jones, Steve Sage, and Marilyn Trent for their input and support in the planning of this special event. The Memorial Day Parade of Heroes has a committee in which three representatives from the Sister City Committee from the City of Rochester Hills and three representatives from the City of Rochester sit on. There are also two community representatives from each of the cities that sit on the community. I'd like to personally thank Mark Albrecht and Paul Hague for sitting on the committee as community members for the City of Rochester. So what's new for 2024? With the recommendations from the parade participants, the Chamber Foundation has decided to take the parade route back to the original route that was done for years. The parade will begin at 9:00 a.m. after the City of Rochester has its flag lowering ceremony at Mount Avon Cemetery. The parade will be lined up on First Street and proceed to Castell. After turning left on Castell, the parade will proceed to Harding and down Harding to where it will make a left on Livernoise, where the parade participants will march down Livernoise to Avon, where the parade will end. And the City of Rochester Hills will be able to execute their Memorial Day event at Veterans Point at the corner of Avon and Livernoise. And then, after that, at 11:30, you can join Chief Cecil at the Rochester Fire Department for hot dogs. We had our police and fire meeting from both municipalities today, and we are all on the same page. The Foundation has received about a dozen parade applications so far. I've secured the Rochester Adams marching band, and they will be performing at all three events that morning. Side Streets, I'm leaning on to Livernoise, will be closed from 9:00 a.m. till roughly around 10:00, the day of the event, or until the last participant has safely reached the end of the parade route. As you can imagine, executing a parade of any size takes resources. Many of the resources come in the form of expenses that are generated by the Chamber Foundation. With that being said, I am here today to ask the City Council and Mayor for $1,000 from the City of Rochester to execute the parade. By doing so, the Foundation believes we'll be responsible for the following items: parade applications being sent out, all marketing material for the parade, including social media. Parade marketing material will include both the City of Rochester and Rochester Hills logos, coordinating volunteers, all day of event operations. I'd like to personally thank you for your time today and your support in this event. I believe that these events will bring our communities together to honor our fallen heroes in a truly great way. This concludes my presentations, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Maggie. Is there any questions? Councilmember Trent?
Oh, just I want to thank you, and I'm glad I'm on the committee again. I know how hard you work, and I'm really glad, with your experience, that you're managing it because you do such a good job. And what can everyone do to help you?
I ask that, we do have a Facebook page for the Memorial Day Parade. Anytime you see any social media, whether it's Instagram, I think LinkedIn, obviously Facebook, please share the information out. I have contacted Mary Beth Allman to do an article on the parade itself with the three communities, the two community events included in that article. And we've already been doing a lot of social media promotion, but that will ramp up a lot more in the next two weeks. And I also want to give a shout out to Lenea. She's been my partner in crime through all of this, so I appreciate all her help with orchestrating the event here at Mount Avon Cemetery.
Well, I'm glad to have it back.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Thank you, Maggie. Thanks for being here and for once again helping us honor Memorial Day. It's so important. I think it's important that we keep our Memorial Day celebration as free of sponsorship and marketing as possible, and so I'm happy to make a motion to authorize or ask the city to pay the $1,000.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Trent, Councilmember Jones.
I was just supporting.
Any further comments? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Maggie, thank you, and we're looking forward to having it back kind of the way it was.
I think there's a lot of community support for this. The veterans are very excited. It's a much shorter route.
Yeah.
An easier route for them to walk, so we should have better participation from the veterans also. So thank you so much, and you guys have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
A shorter route for council people. Okay, before we get to the DDA thing, is there any other public comment we'd like to? Brian, anything?
Thank you. I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay. All right, now we're going to move on to a presentation from the Downtown of Elm Authority for the fiscal year 2025 budget and an update on the Graham.
Good evening, Council.
The Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ben Giovinelli, Rochester DDA Chair, with Chrissy Travaro and Steve Auger from Auger Klein and Eller, and Mike is here as well. So we're at full strength this evening to answer any questions.
Good.
So as promised, we're here this evening to formally present the budget for the DDA for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2025. And elephant in the room, or the 500-pound gorilla, is the giant line item in the budget with respect to the Graham. So we're going to kill two birds with one stone, provide an update in that, since it's just been like crazy time for us to go through it. But first and foremost, I want to thank the DDA Board, specifically the site committee, Roger Nat, Bob Bloomingdale, Tony LaPuma. Their efforts in getting us to this point in such a compressed timeframe have just been outstanding. I couldn't have done it without those guys. So much love to those guys. I also want to thank City Council for your patience as we navigated these tough waters, and especially Mayor Bixson and Councilperson Trent for your time, energy, effort, and life force in kind of helping us get through to this point where we're at this evening. So thanks for that. As you know, the DDA Board and all the subcommittees are comprised entirely of unpaid community volunteers whose tireless efforts make all that we do possible for this community. So we couldn't do without the commitment of those who volunteer for us. So to all of our volunteers and our board members, thank you. And last, and certainly not least, I want to thank our director, Chris Travaro, Taylor, and Jenna for their energy effort and life force on a regular basis for what they do for the DDA. So you guys are killer, and we're blessed to have you on our team. So as I said, with me presenting this evening, we've got budget slash project update. So maybe the best place to start is going to be the deck, I think, and the accountant, I'm not the IT guy.
I got it. I got it.
Anthony's usually there.
Well, if something goes awry, that's who I'm calling.
Anthony's back there.
Oh, is he? No, he is here. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so Chrissy, we're going to tag team on this part. So I thought, first of all, so I sent you guys a memo, and I apologize for the sort of, but I wanted to kind of get us all sort of level set. But just to give everybody in the public an idea of what a compressed timeframe we're talking about with respect to this project. So way, way back, the original version of this project was scuttled due to COVID. We rebooted it, started to go down a path, and we figured out quickly it was going to be twice as much as we thought it was going to be, so we hit the brakes. And that was like towards the tail end of the year last year. Planned funding from state and federal sources didn't come through, so we were just like, all right, let's just wait, and we'll come back when we visit it. So end of the year came on, first part of the year in goals and objectives, we reaffirmed to it. And one of the outcomes of that meeting was to get together with you guys and kind of share and take notes and get some lessons learned and some feedback from council as to, you know, if this was going to be something in a version 2.0, what would it look like and what would we need to do. So we had that meeting. You guys gave us our feedback. And from there, I say the Lord works in mysterious ways because right about that time, this property became available. And I floated a few travel and said, hey, what if, what if, would there be any, you know, interest in it? And we got some really good feedback from you guys, so we appreciate that. So on the 5th, I called a DDA special meeting to discuss the potential project, which included the acquisition of property, and it's no secret anymore, especially thanks to the Oakland Press that we're in negotiations to buy the former animal hospital on Second Street, 265 East Second Street. So we met with the DDA to discuss the potential project and just to get their sort of feedback in whether or not we should proceed. So we did that. They gave me direction, they gave us direction to go ahead and enter into negotiations with the seller, which we did. And then on the 11th, we updated, Chrissy and I came before council with Pat McKay, and we sort of updated you guys on the project, where we were at on it at that time, most of which has not changed, except we got really good pictures now. Ben's clip art is no longer a piece of the presentation, right? So between March 15th and March 25th, we were like hammered down buying a parking lot and buying the building and dealing with the parking lot. So been through securing funding and going through all that stuff. Week of the 28th or on the 28th, we reaffirmed our architect choice, who was here this evening, as I said, and also identified our banking partner. As you guys know, we're partnering with Chief Financial Credit Union, which is going to finance part of the project for us, which is excellent. We're so excited to work with them. Week of April Fools, we firmed up the DDA budget and the project per forma. On the 4th, I sent you guys a memo out updating you sort of where we were at at that particular time and the draft budget of the DDA, which pretty much hasn't changed since mid, like the second or third week of March. The only thing I didn't know was the numbers for this. But I gave you a budget kind of outlining this year and sort of future years, what that looked like. And then on the 8th, Chrissy and I came before council again to address any questions you guys had and sort of give a quick 50,000-foot update on the project. From the 10th to the 15th, we met with the architects, and we started to firm up the plan. On the 16th, literally on the afternoon of 16th, we met at AK's office, went through the press, the idea, made some changes. And at 5:00 p.m. on the 17th, right before our DDA meeting, we got the revised stuff, and we presented it to the DDA Board for its consideration, both the budget and the project, and both were passed by the DDA. Which kind of brings us to sort of why we're doing what we're doing. So some of this, you guys have seen it already, but we figured now that more people sort of are in the know, it might be beneficial from a level set to kind of talk about this. So I'll let Chrissy talk about why we're doing this.
Good evening, Council. So yes, many of you have already heard the story, so I apologize, but here we go. When we were looking at the site, when the opportunity came available to purchase the Animal Emergency Center, Ben actually sent me a note with a photo of that rock that is at the top of the hill, right next to the Rochester Conservatory of Music. And if anyone's ever noticed that rock, if you've been on any of the school tours, you'll know that that is actually the site of the first home in Rochester that was owned by the Graham family. And so Ben said, you know, we really need to figure out a way to include history in all of this. So armed with knowledge about the Graham family, I called our friend Pat McKay, who knows everything about everything about Rochester, to find out a little bit more about the Graham family, what their accomplishments were, what they did for the city. And he was happy to say that the Graham family, yes, he confirmed that was the site, that was the first family that settled Rochester back in 1817. But other than that, they didn't do a whole heck of a lot. So then we started talking a little bit more. He said, but, did you know that we had five corporate farms in Rochester? That there are so many innovators and inventors that lived in Rochester and chose Rochester to have their inventions and have their innovations? And maybe the name "The Graham" in our mind became a little bit more emblematic rather than literal. So calling the building "The Graham" is because we want to celebrate that rich farming history, that history about always wanting to be first, wanting to be an innovator, wanting to be an inventor. And so we thought, taking that and applying that to the building, and then of course, Pat was happy to say, you know, we always love off-site exhibition spaces. So if there was a way with "The Graham" that we could include artifacts and farming implements and photos, we'd be happy to provide that to you so we can help tell that story about these amazing families of Rochester and calling the building "The Graham." So everyone seems really excited about that opportunity, and so we're going to be digging into that as the coming weeks and months go on. But in addition to that, digging into "The Graham", obviously, we've got a little bit of history, but that building's going to allow us to do so many more things and achieve a lot of things that we needed to do with the original plan. Because back when we had our visioning sessions, one of the things that we had heard from so many people back, gosh, it was around 2016, 17, they wanted to see the farmers' market bigger and better. They wanted more vendors. We're a local market, so we only have farmers. We're a farmers-only market. We're growers' markets. When you come to our market in May, you're not going to see strawberries because they're not in season yet. But there's so many of our farmers that they farm all year round, and we don't have that opportunity to have them do that. So by having this building, it does a couple things for us. It's going to allow us to have additional market vendor spaces, and you'll see in the renderings tonight, a couple different ways that we're going to be accommodating that. Bringing back the holiday market, which is something that many of you might remember that Chief Cecil was kind enough to say yes to me for a couple years and let us squeeze a holiday market in around the fire trucks. It was charming, and it was a market in the middle of a bunch of fire trucks. So, you know, we did that for a little while, and we did our best with that. But this would give us a home that we could actually do that on a regular basis. It also gives us a flexible event space. As you know, whenever we want to do an event downtown, we have to close down a street or a parking lot. And there are some events that we've done outside that we don't do anymore because the expense of renting all the tables and chairs and linens and big tents and all of that, by the time we do all of that, we can't even pay for the event because we're not going to make any money on it. So, and you know, with us, we're a nonprofit. Everything that we do, as you see, before sharing with the PSD presentation after this, everything has a revenue offset. And we found there's a lot of things we couldn't do anymore, but that didn't change the demand of people wanting those types of events, and specifically food-based events. People love food. Everybody eats. So we thought this will give us an opportunity to have a big, wide-open space that the committee can start to tell us what they'd like to see there and what opportunities that space presents for us, which is amazing. And then, of course, more seating over there. You'll see that in the renderings as well. And then last but certainly not least, we run a very robust food assistance program. Taylor does an amazing job with EBT, Double Up Food Box. We have so many people that come to the market to use their food assistance dollars to buy fresh food. And when they do that, to be honest, right now, they're doing it on sort of the porch of the little barn with Pip, who's our market manager. And as you know, and it's a very personal thing, and so we're really excited that within this program, we're able to not only include the food assistance programs, but do it in a private space so that people can go ahead and get their food assistance without having to do that out loud in the public. So we're really excited for that opportunity. And one of the big things that we heard when we were talking with council, talking at DDA, is that we wanted it to look like it had always been there. And this was one of our inspo pictures that we are using to make that happen. And then you may notice the photo to your right, those are the Main Street bricks. It's actually from one of the planters. For anyone who doesn't know a little Main Street history, underneath, when we did Main Street makeover back in 2012, the original road, which was made of brick, was still down there. We excavated that, and we have, Nick, what do you think, about 250,000 bricks left, give or take? So we've got a few. But as we went through the bricks, they're bricks. They're solid bricks. They don't make them like that anymore. And they came from seven different foundries. As you can see, this one happens to be the Speedway bricks. Those were most prevalent. So whenever they were building pieces, they would get them from the different foundries. Speedway is because they are from Indianapolis. This is the same foundry that made the bricks at the Indianapolis Speedway. So again, trying to tie in more history, taking inspiration for that. So I know you guys want to see renderings, so I'm not going to drag this out anymore. But I'm pleased to invite Steve Auger up. He really jumped in with us because they've been working with us so hard. And when we talked to him about what we wanted to do, we said, do you still want to be on board with us? And he said, heck, yeah. So I'm going to turn things over to Steve.
Thank you. Council Steve Auger with Auger Klein Eller Architects. We thought this project was gone last year, but luckily, this great idea came about. And I'm going to walk you through some of the thoughts here and the way we're thinking about it. This is basically the current layout of the farmer's market. And we look at this building as this event center as a support system for this, that very popular program that all of us enjoy, and what kind of amenities we can add to that program. So you can see that in the upper left-hand corner there is the former animal hospital. It's about a 5,000-square-foot building. We're adding about 2,000 square foot, and we'll review what that's all about. But basically, we're looking at it as a support system. One of the functions, a support system for the farmer's market. So within that addition will be restrooms and other amenities to support that activity and for the farmers to display in. Basically, we're keeping the parking lot as it is. On the right-hand side, you could see the potential for a sitting area. But the big feature of this is going to be that stage element that's there on the upper left-hand side for entertainment and public display. And that's going to be the new feature for, we hope, for the farmer's market. This is off of Second Street, looking into the former animal hospital here. On the left, there are some shaded structures that were coming over from the previous design, something that's really needed. There's not much shade on the site, so we want to provide that. You can see, we're proposing that we open up the building with overhead doors, allowing light and air in, making it an indoor-outdoor space for the two and a half seasons we get of that, and closing those doors off for the other parts of the season. This is the stage element. We talked about bricks, talked about making it look like it always had been there. This features about 1,000 square foot of covered space to be programmed, a little nod to Eastern Market there, as you can see with the archways, that the committee really liked that version. So that's what lives. And so this would open up onto the parking lot and be used for features of public, for public use. Here's the plan. You can see that the light yellow on the right is the existing space. It's about 5,000 square feet. We're proposing this addition about 2,000 feet, 2,300 square feet, mainly going to be bathrooms for the public, something that's much needed for those of us who attend that, and especially moms with small kids and that kind of thing. Nothing like that in that area of town. There's the office. There'll be a small office there on the lower right there, janitor's closet, those kinds of things, and then a family restroom as well. All of that will be fully accessible by the ADA. Then the stage backs up onto a storage area that will be used for storage for both the event space and for the staging area and for all the junk the DDA has. This is a rough section of it, so you can see how the topography changes there. The people standing on the far left are at the level of the parking lot, and the people on the far right are at the level of the event space. So we have some topography to wrestle with. We're proposing we tuck the restrooms in at the level of the event space, and then we can access from there. This is the Water Street elevation. We're proposing that we pop some overhead doors into that area as well. And then inside, this building is a pre-manufactured building, so we can gut the whole thing. It's all clear span in there. So we can take out everything that's in there, and it gives us a large Barnes-type structure. The history wall that Chrissy had mentioned is going to be, we're proposing it on that back wall. We haven't fully developed what those elements are going to be, but the idea is that the history be spelled out mainly along that back wall. On the left-hand side, that's how you could access the restrooms. You can access the restrooms from the interior of this building and the exterior as well. You can see how we make up the handicap accessibility here with the handicap ramp coming from the upper parking lot, and then down to the building level with stairs and making all that work accessible across both lots. You see some of the brick detailing that Chrissy had mentioned. We have some bricks to spread around, and that plaza is one potential for that. And then just looking back further what the overall would look like from the street sign. Questions?
Councilmember Jones?
First off, it's wonderful. Like, I love every aspect of it, so thanks for all the hard work and changing it up. How, this might be the dumbest question, but the little green awnings are there now for farmer's market, and then they're gone for parking during the week?
They're the same awnings that are there now. Those are just our rendition of the awning, so to speak. So it's...
You mean the tents, the green tents?
The farmers would bring them.
Right.
Yeah, that's just for, that's for placement only, right?
Yeah, it's just for placement.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, yeah.
This would be during normal farmer's market. That would be a million different kinds of tents and stuff.
Yeah. It's kind of a hodgepodge, yeah, yeah.
So you're not providing them?
No, no.
Yeah, we're basically doing that for the count, just to make sure our counts are right.
And it looks good, too, right?
Yeah. But it might be an idea.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I am super excited to see this. I love every aspect of it. Actually, I have been getting texts, a few texts. One of them says, I saw pictures of the new farmer's market area. First, yay, they bought the building and loved the whole concept. So I'm getting that in emails and in person as well. But so I love the history. I love the building. I like the combination of the contemporary and the traditional, how you mix that in. It's really nice. I love the garage doors. Really love the bathrooms. And I have a few questions, though. What is the storage and office size in the lobby? Because you're adding 2,000 square feet, which is cool, but...
Right, right.
The office size in general.
The office size is roughly eight by eight.
Okay.
So it's not huge.
Okay. And then storage, is there...
Storage is the remainder. Storage is about 1,200 square feet.
Oh, okay. That's pretty good. Okay. All right. And so another thing is, coming off of Cloud Nine, and exciting as this is to see, I know because of the experience with the previous project, that I'd like to understand how you're going to adhere to the new budget. Like, how do you envision that? Because we're thinking it might be nice not to have a not-to-exceed number. And I just want an understanding that, I know we haven't seen the budget, but I have. It's around 2.4 million. And it looks like, from what I've seen and being part of the previous project, that those numbers look fairly accurate from somebody who, I've worked on some with architects before in building projects, but just want to know, is there a cushion in there? Like, is that just to the bone? Or, I mean, I know that...
The budget you saw, there's a quarter million dollars as contingency in that. So it's a pretty healthy, it's a pretty healthy budget. As with any budget, it's a budget right now, and we know that's our...
I know. I understand.
The...
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh, do I have the next slide?
Yeah, so, yeah, I understand that. Truly appreciate seeing that. Yeah.
Yeah. So this is our view of it right now. Yeah, so this is, this is, this is our view of it right now. It, it is a 30,000-foot view of the budget.
Yeah, right.
It, it's, it's a realistic budget. You know, if we hit something we don't know in the building, that's something. But with, with the healthy contingency, we're comfortable. You know, if I could, to, to the previous project, the problem with the previous project, you know, it was, it was a great project, but the problem is a third of that budget basically was underground.
Right, and that's what I was seeing with this one, right?
And this, this project is pretty much all above ground. So we're not going to hit that kind of bogey.
Yeah, and I saw you, it looks like you're saving some money from not putting that handicap accessibility on Water Street. Kind of moving it sort of condensed size. Yeah, there's things that I saw that you would scale back from the other one that were quite obvious. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. I love it.
Great.
Your Portim Silvia?
Thank you, thank you. Yes, this is super exciting. Every time I look at it, I think I'm just drawn to this place. Like I'm excited. I want to go there. It looks, looks like, looks fantastic. Question, we've confirmed that this design meets the grant requirements. Because we have, what, 950, 60,000 dollars of grant money coming on this?
900 plus. So yes, in the middle of that timeline side that Ben had, we do have, we'd had to give Ben's really pretty pencil drawings to Oakland County and they did go ahead and sign off on it. The main piece was having the stage. That was, that was what it was supposed to be, is a gathering space of the stage. So they're letting us play a little bit with that. The 900,000 cannot go toward the purchase of the building, but can be used for renovation of the building. But it's 900 and we're going to find out very shortly. They're beginning inter-local agreements out to everybody. So right now, the 13 communities that are receiving dollars from the ARPA funds are confirming their budgets. And then if there's extra monies, they'll be distributed amongst the other projects. So that's why we know it's about 920, but we're waiting to see if there might be a little bit more in there. But the inter-local agreement should be coming to you as soon as we see them in May because they want to have everything executed by the end of June.
Great.
Councilmember Alvin?
Sure. Hi, thank you very much. And Christie, I spoke to you on Friday and everything. I'm telling you, it looks fantastic. And Ben, thank you for all your work as well. It may have been in some of the documents, but for people watching at home and for people who are maybe in the audience, could you tell us kind of briefly what the timeline is if this thing were to move forward? Kind of shovel in the ground and when do you think the ribbon cutting would be?
Uh, well, no pressure.
Yeah, no. I'm going to hold you to the exact date.
Yeah, no worries. So it's, there's a lot of chicken and the egg, and I hate to say that. So we're here tonight because I have to promote, present a budget to you guys. It needs to be, go to public hearing in May. I'm also in the process of trying to help buy a building for the DDA, which there's like, all of these parts have to sort of come together as one. So the idea, fingers crossed, is that the, our budget hopefully passes. You guys are down with all the numbers as we have laid out and the not to exceed, which I've got in there. And I'll cover that in a moment. You know, like a June 1-ish close on the building. And then it's going to be demo work right after that. I think we have a sage burning in there. Scheduled for our animals' souls to send them off, right? But I tease. But we need, there's, there's a lot of things that have to get done. So we're going to start that. And the goal is to hopefully have it done within a year, right? So, so by the following.
No, that's great.
Yeah, because we'll be starting it, you know, in earnest. The, the thing that we have to be very careful, we learned a lot of lessons from the Main Street makeover, is that communicate, 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 make sure everybody's on the same page. We know what's going on. The good news is, is that a lot of the, the construction work is going to happen off of the parking lot, right? So we're not going to be taking up or tying that, that parking lot up. There, of course, will be some spaces. But by and large, it'll be, it hopefully will be fine. And we're going to save, I think we talked about it, Tony, we're going to do the parking lot last, right? As far as the finish, but I think maybe like the first coat, the regrading is going to happen and new electric and lights and water and all that stuff's going to go on. But the, the actual final paving of the parking lot will be the absolute last thing that we do. And then it'll probably be next spring or summer or something like that. So.
Thank you. No, that's perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
Sarah?
Jeff, thank you. Um, it's absolutely beautiful. I love this design. I think just the, the purposing, the repurposing of this building, attaching it to farmer's market lot, I think just incredibly functional, everything that's going to bring for the city from an event, you know, capability. This is, this is an awesome project. So thank you guys for your patience and working with us and taking the feedback. Just a couple of questions. With it being, you know, a barn structure, the, the garage doors, which are absolutely beautiful and I love how it'll open it up, you know, make it really feel that indoor-outdoor feel. But will this be a four-season building to be used year-round? Okay. And then I know we touched a little bit, but any update on the plans for the bathrooms? Will they be open other than the farmer's market time? What's the, the thought there?
Yeah, so for sure, yes. To answer your questions, yes, we're going to have them open. I don't know what that looks like from a, you know, security and all the other kind of stuff. So we'll work with you guys, you know, and with PD on that to make sure that we're all in alignment. What's the old saying? We can't govern morality. So we never know what's going to happen. But we want to make sure that we're providing a safe and comfortable environment for our guests to use the restroom. But the idea is that it would be open and available at least, you know, normal hours or some, some hours. And we'll work with you guys on that for sure.
Okay, I just had one, I had one thought because it looked like the office and the family restroom were about the same size. But if there was a concern with keeping all of the indoor space open with the larger bathroom, potentially switching those two so you had access to just one bathroom, kind of a more extended hours could be an option?
Yeah, I think, Steve can speak to it, but if we go back, I'm going to go back this way. Oopsie, other way. So here, so the, the way that it was laid out is there's a door that goes into the event space. So what you're talking about is we're going to be able to close this off and this entire building will be secure. And then you will just enter the bathroom from this area, right, Steve?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so this is all ADA compliant. In fact, we've talked about the handicap parking sort of being in this area here or closed for the building. And Nick's got all those rules. I don't know the rules. But anyway, so the bathroom would be open. So what happens here? If you're going in from the building to use the facilities or coming in from outside, you enter this lobby, right? So you're, you're the first place you're going to go as a lobby, not unlike what we have here. This office, which would be sort of the administrative part for the EBT, would be locked, you know, during the day when there's not a, a market going on. As, this is a janitor's closet here. So unless somebody needs a mop or a bucket, I think we're good. We can lock that. But I, I don't see a reason to close the, the family, because what we would do is, once it's locked, we're just going to lock this door right here and the whole thing shut down. Right? And then. And Mike, he, he, he pulled a fast one on me. So this door is real. This one's fake. Just so you know, I was like, dude, where does that door go?
Looks very balanced.
But I did that to balance it. I'm like, yes, you did. Nice job. That's why I'm the accountant and you're the architect. So, so yeah, and then the idea on this one here is, we were, if you remember the last time we talked about having the shade structures in the parking lot, we're just doing math, right? So the parking lot has a significant number of spaces. We're already going to be taking up a, a chunk of spaces in the one corner. We figured let's bring the shade element up on the top. And it, and this was Tony's idea with the, bringing it up here and then running the lights across. I think it just adds a whole vibe that's super cool. So, you know, so that, that worked out well. So that's why these are up here. And then FYI, this is permanent. The idea, they're going to be just like what's at the PD where they park the cop cars under. They're not going to go anywhere. So the good news is, it's public parking. And if you're one of the early, early birds, you can park in there and get covered parking during the day while you're there. So, but that's, you guys decide that. We don't. We just provide the, the dirt, right? So, but yeah, so that's kind of, I don't know if anything building-wise, I'm happy to get into the numbers now if you want, so.
Want to add one more comment?
Sure, yeah, go.
So I know early rendering still, but I saw one small little bike rack. I'd love to see.
They know that this is my thing. Thank you.
Everybody's got a thing. Yeah. No, for sure. Those kind of, those little lacunae.
I'd love to see a little bit more.
Yeah, no, 100%.
Thank you, Sarah.
It's like the Walking Dead. We have to deal with the zombies walking through here.
Yeah, I did notice that guy was a zombie.
The zombie apocalypse. My favorite one though is the, this guy's here. It's like, whoa. So, but that's just, you know, it's just, you know, they're, they're doing it to give, giving an idea of what it looks like when it's activated. But yeah, for sure. Like, part of the thing we were talking about also is like these bollards, we want to make sure that, that they're going to be sufficient. And we'll work with PD to make sure that, you know, we've got everything, you know, dialed in. But we don't want kids up there doing burnouts and stuff like that, right? So unfortunately, we have to think about the bad stuff, which is.
Just a few more, just a few more spots.
100%, nope, we got you.
That's all I ask.
Note made. We're good.
Appreciate that.
So are there any more questions on the gram before we get into the budget? Okay, budget.
Okay, okay, budget. Mayor's got the hammer now.
Thank you for that presentation.
You bet. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. All right, Christie, what am I doing here? Did I do something bad? I want the Excel. Oh, Excel right here?
Well, that makes him so happy. Excel.
I know. Well, I told her to send the spreadsheet to you guys just so you had it, so you could see where Ben got his numbers from. So the downside of having an accountant, as the DDA chairs, you get death by Excel. So. So this is kind of the summary and this will lead into the budget. So the total project is 3.9 million dollars, of which about 925,000 is being paid for by the county through the grant dollars. So the total cost of the DDA is about $3 million. However, in this one versus version 1.0, we're actually buying a building for 1.35, 1.325. I'm adding 50 grand for closing costs here, but we're buying a building for 1.3, you know, 1.4 million dollars almost. So the actual money coming out of the TIF to pay for this particular project is, is the 1.6 million dollars. And then I tried to calendarize for you guys, kind of looking out over the horizon. All right, what is the long-term commitment of this project? So I don't know with 100% certainty. I asked, and we'll get to it in a second. I asked that you guys, when you approve this, anything that we don't spend, just automatically have it carry over to the next year because maybe a contractor hasn't given us an invoice or something. Otherwise, we'll just have to come back and get a budget amendment, which is perfectly fine as well. But I'm guessing about 500 grand this year in demo costs. If we close June 1st, we'll have our first mortgage payment, that kind of thing. But the lion's share of the costs are going to happen in fiscal 2025, which is 7/1/2024 to 6/30/2025, with the goal to have the project completed by 7/1/2025, if that makes sense. It may trickle over, you know, into the summer. What is the old saying? It always takes twice as long, right? Two weeks, right? And then after that, it's just debt service, which is 188,999. So I want to thank our partners at Chief Financial for stepping up and really giving us a, a fantastic deal with respect to interest rates and being super flexible. I was talking to their commercial loan guy today. I think we're, we're in good shape. We're just deciding on what covenant. I had to explain to him the difference between private and public accounting and how the budget works. I'm like, dude, it took me 12 years to figure it out. So, but I think we're in a good spot. And Tom, Delusion's been fantastic. So always a great partner and we're super appreciative. All right, so summary budget. So you guys have had this for some time. It's really, the only thing I didn't have was the exact cost of the project because it just, you know, we started with a guess and we were actually pretty close. And they're just, you know, but it, it, it trickled up a little bit. So the city renting budget, so '23 and '24, '24 is the year that we're in currently. So you guys know where we're at here. And then I worked with Director Maggio to come up with sort of a forward-looking thing all the way out to 12/31/2030, which is the current end of the DDA TIF. So, and this is why I have it highlighted. We're not, you know, this is sort of a directional thing, aspirational, just to kind of give you guys some sort of insight into the future as to where, where our thoughts are with respect, with respect to the project. But for fiscal year 2025, the year that we're talking about, about 1.4 million dollars in Rochester City tax capture, about 817,000, almost 818,000 dollars of non-Rochester City tax capture. That's OPC, County General Parks, HCMA, OCC, and then the Regional Transit Authority. So we, we capture those tax dollars too, which is all reinvested in the district. And then other inflows, so 2.2 million dollars of sort of tax capture. And then we've got another 236,000 dollars. Anthony, I do want the detail between about the 1,100 dollars of miscellaneous income where that came in a 2.3 million dollar budget. But the, the interest, we're grateful as starting to get a little bit more money on interest income and some money from biz dev. So the total inflows for the budget year are about just under 2.5 million dollars. 2,464,170. Of course, I'll predicate on final county numbers and the finance director will have that for you guys in time for your budget. In terms of the outflows, what the DDA spends money on, there's two components. The DDA has its operations, right? So staff is maintaining the dumpsters, cutting the grass, do all the stuff that we do downtown, and then capital investment. So as a rule of thumb, we always try and do 60/40. We far exceeded it and, and we're sticking to that commitment. Excuse me. So if you look at the budget, we take in 817,000 dollars a year from non, non-city, non-Rochester capture. And our staff, the maintenance, rent for the office space, cross charges we pay to the DPW and to the, to the city and whatnot. Is, oh gosh, I should change that number. 666, 667,000 dollars. So we actually take in enough money from outside. So in effect, all of the Rochester, Rochester City tax capture goes right into capital development in, in, in the district. So, which is great. Capital budget, so 200 grand a year is our kicker for big bright lights, which is handled by PSD. And Christie will be dealing with that budget in a little bit. Capex, all others. So this would be streetlights and, you know, all the other stuff that you see that we do around here. And there, there is sufficient detail. And I, on the sheet here, if you would go back, you can see where I find my numbers and you can trace back. But it's, it's an amalgamation of items like, you know, light poles and, right, everything else. So here in the, this line here, I'm sorry, the 505 and the 1455, and then this 246,999, I'll get to that in a second. That's our mortgage payment plus the estimated cost for upkeep and lights and maintenance and that sort of thing. But with that, and then kicking 325,000 dollars this year to the parking fund, which is in the years past, it's been 50,000, COVID year notwithstanding. So we're taking in, we're taking in 2.2464,170, and we're spending 3136,185. So that immediately is a 672,000 dollar deficit. Now, as we all know in government accounting, it's not really a deficit. This is money that we've been saving already. It's just being pulled. Now we're actually going to spend it. So this is coming, the DDA does not have a fund balance. It's a capital project reserve balance. So when we collect TIF dollars, they're generally assigned to some event or some physical activity within the district. And to the extent that those dollars are spent, they're carried forward. And, and we've been purposely carrying forward dollars for this particular project. And now we get to make it real. So at the end, we will have 697,253 in the capital reserve balance. On the memo that I had sent you guys before, I said it was going to be 988 and the 291,000 difference, no, don't do that, is the difference. And I sent this in my memo to you guys last week. Once we got the quote from the architects, I just changed the number. So now I had real numbers, right? So this is, that's what drove the difference. And I had outlined that in my memo. And this ends up being a timing difference. I have $100,000 less in this fiscal year and I'm just moving it to the next year. So if you add those two together, it works out. So really that's from a budgeting standpoint, you can see, looking out over the horizon, our operational costs are rather fixed. There's not, you know, a ton that we're expecting, you know, increase in regular op stuff going out. So really the only thing left over is, is the fun projects that we get to do to develop the district, which is what we're supposed to be doing. And this is the pro forma for the, the building itself. I purposely did not include any revenue in here at all for any kind of activation. So anything, if, if, if our staff rents the building out, does whatever, $1 is going to be more than what's in the budget here. So I just, I wanted to run with, let's just run with, assuming that nothing else comes in except for tax dollars. What do we got to work with? Excuse me. So 2024, so this is going to be 490 of the 505 is going to end up being closing costs, right? And then we'll have our first payment, which I'm presuming will be due at the end of June. So if that carries forward, then of course it'll carry forward. And then it's 188,999 for mortgage and debt interest and principal on out. Excuse me, with the building fully paid off by December 31st, 2030, by the time the DDA TIF expires. I'm guessing, this is just an educated guess, but about 30 grand a year for maintenance and cleaning, 18 grand for heat and utilities and the dreaded other, I just put in 10 grand because I have no idea. The cleaning, I'm guessing based on just our two offices and how much we pay a year to have people clean our place. So I figured it's got to be somewhat similar, far on the same cadence, because we got some high-maintenance people that work at my buildings. So that should be fine. So roughly about 250,000 dollars a year, sort of an operational cost on a go-forward basis until the building's fully paid off. Then after that, it's just going to be, you know, what is that? 58,000 dollars a year going forward. So it's very economical. And the good news is, is we're going to have, you know, more real estate. We're going to have, what, 28 more parking spots or something like that. So it, it boxes. And then I just sent the amortization schedule and then I took the city budget and kind of lined it up for you guys. And I know you all have this. So the farther you go, deeper. guys and I I know you all have this so um the farther you go deeper like my partners know whenever we get into any Ben spreadsheet start to the left and work your way right and it gets more intense and you lose your lose track of where you're at and the farther right but you go but some people want the detail so it's all there but bottom line is is that you know I think that you know excuse me with respect to the project you know we're able to do the project plus do all of our other um uh all of our other commitments as well so as you can see here in twenty six going forward not only we have three twenty five going to parking for till the end uh but also four to five hundred thousand dollars a year six hundred thousand dollars a year going to streets and this may ebb and flow depending on how um the um infrastructure committee tells us to spend but I just wanted to put out there for you that this is what we're earmarking it for this is what the intent is um but if you look at it that's you know it's uh it's it's we're able to do both and it's not gonna be uncomfortable and at the very end you're gonna have you know about one point seven million dollars that we will do um you know other capital stuff um you know to the extent that that uh the TIF is we hope this continues on but if it doesn't that's available as well so budget standpoint that's sort of it um do I have to go back to the thing second and up here oh okay gotcha alright got it alright so we went through the budget so the the big thing on the budget two three six six four eight five or whatever that number says is tiny and I'm old and I can't see it
That's right
Two four six eight five five
What's that?
Two four six
Got it okay cool uh so what I'm cautioning everybody is this is this is the number and I'm gonna make it a not what two three six six
Yes, yes
Yeah
Oh down there sorry
Yeah no no two three six six four eight five I think it is
Yeah
Um so my my caution is is that I'm not we're not going this is a line item by line on a budget right so if you know asphalt comes in it says eighty seven five it comes in a hundred eighty seven five but I'm a hundred grand less someplace else it's all balancing out so the number is gonna be a not to exceed two three six six four eight five it's not gonna be every one of those elements right
Allowance theory
Correct yeah 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 so I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on that one um because um it's just you know you don't know and we don't know until you know it right so um so the potential contingencies alright so these are things that could blow the whole thing up or make it more difficult nothing's gonna be blown you know just make it more difficult it's always a challenge right uh so the number one thing is us completing the due diligence of the property in in the purchase agreement term so I think we have uh our attorney said uh end of uh middle of June is our term expire so we're making headway we've got some uh there's some hair on that deal um with respect to property lines uh and we're working through it at the present time um so there's two it's called a scrivener's error but there's um one the county map shows the property line going through the middle of the parking lot up there and the actual property goes all the way to the uh brick wall that's there next to the bank and then we were talking with Roger Nepp and he's like whose brick wall is this and he thinks it's missile felt so there's a lot of stuff that we're still working on so it's the old proverbial onion the more layers you peel back right but uh but we are working through it it's gonna be great yes ma'am
Uh to that point I mean the property just sold right and did they not get through
Um so their title company was fine with it um we have a little bit higher threshold because we're governmental and we got you know um plus it was they bought it on land contract so the you know I'll defer to the attorneys in the room but for in 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 sort of generally speaking on a land contractor a little bit more um uh we need to we're we're going the extra mile let's put it that way our attorney seems fine with it he said it's gonna be fine we'll get it worked out he's not overly concerned about it but it's just a potential so I have to make sure you guys are aware of it excuse me alright so this one here I don't I'm hoping doesn't happen but you never know so we close on the property so we're done we close on the property it goes to planning and they don't approve it by the time you know I saw I I have a bought a building but I don't have the approval from planning yet so there there may be a timing thing there so um I I know that that um everyone's committed to try and get it through as quick as possible Nick I don't know if you got any thoughts on that or
Yeah we'll we'll be after but it'll probably be the June July by the end of July I'll take two meetings
Okay so it's out there I just you know I just just so I'm we're all on the same page um uh and then um this one I just it's extremely remote but if for some other unforeseen outlier so the planning commission comes back and says alright your intended use doesn't fit because of this and this and this you have to do all this other stuff then I'm gonna have to come back before you guys hey look you know um planning came back and said we had to do all these other things um so this is why I talk about version three dot oh that one I don't we've talked about it to sort of you know with um everybody and everybody seems like it's this is I don't wanna say a slam dunk but it's pretty easy um but you know you never know until you get into it what you know something will pop out you know a a little mole will pop his head out of the dirt and you'll have to come out there with a hammer and whack it in the head so we'll uh we'll cross the bridge we come to it but I just want to make sure that you guys were you know all we were all on the same page that there's you know it's not a done deal yet we're still in the process of it alright so our ask of council this evening so what we'd like to do is to get your support for the project uh contingent on the following uh us actually securing bank financing and buying the property of course um securing all the necessary planning commission other required governmental approvals because there's this is gonna have to go through a bunch of people to get approved right so we we're all aligned that this can't happen unless that happens excuse me uh and us securing at least nine hundred thousand dollars in county project grant dollars we think it's gonna be somewhere between nine twenty five and nine fifty we don't know we'll know probably in a couple weeks uh fingers crossed but uh they're working on it um and then uh the total demolition and construction build out costs of the of the of the purchase not or the the project not to exceed two three six six four eight five so once again that'd be the total all in budget um some items higher some lower but that's all we intend to spend to do this and deliver to deliver all of the key deliverables in the project um so our asks from you guys is um our council has asked or advised us to undertake the process of amending the DDA development plan not the TIF plan this is this is basically saying this is what we intend to um do uh as far as the development in the district uh to include the farmer's market improvement project by name and just have a general description so I'm told this is largely housekeeping but it's just it's it's good practice so we would ask that 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 happened once again doesn't happen happen this evening uh you could add to the agenda and sort of take it up over the next you know few meetings um uh approve a a fiscal year twenty twenty four budget amendment formally moving five oh five seven fifty from the DDA Capital Reserve to the project so we can go ahead and close on the property and start to do the demolition um so this is stuff that's happening in this fiscal year not next fiscal year
Oh okay
Um and then next fiscally uh the the third would be approve our request to borrow one million forty thousand dollars from Chief Financial Credit Union uh to finance a portion of land acquisition for the property secured uh located at two six two sixty five East Second Street so the intention is for us to buy this property and incorporate it physically into the the existing lot to make it one contiguous parcel uh and then with respect to the twenty twenty five budget which is why we're here this evening pending public hearing of course which I think is like second week in May or something um you know uh we ask you to approve our budget as presented uh which includes the cost so once that approval happens that will allow us to spend those that one point four million dollars in fiscal twenty twenty five to to close the deal as it were um so really that's it right so from the future standpoint our goals were clear on this project we wanted to make sure A thank you again for you know working with us and providing guidance and leadership and I think we've arrived at something that everybody likes right or there's generally you know we've got really good momentum on this one and um we wouldn't have been able to do it without your guys' support and your guys' pressure so thank you for that it's uh what's the old saying about diamonds you know the more you press the better the prettier the diamond so I think that's where we're at um so we have uh sufficient funding to do both streets and parking commitments plus deliver this project and having it paid off by twenty uh twelve thirty one twenty thirty which is the end of the TIF um uh with all the foregoing uh we're also project projected to have about one point seven million dollars to be set to be spent on additional projects over the course of the next you know six and a half years uh for the DDA's terminal year uh at six thirty twenty I'm sorry uh twelve thirty one twenty thirty and that sort of wraps
That was a wrong date there at the end right it should be twenty thirty not twenty twenty five right
Uh fiscal twenty twenty five yeah um yeah yeah sorry
Yeah just just confirming
Yeah accountant not an English major thank you So it's been a lot and this has been a tough haul and I showed you guys we couldn't have gone it's been literally been hammered down since uh you know uh February nineteenth so it's a very short period of time I want to give a huge thanks to to Steve Auger to Micah from just basically dropping everything and getting us to this point this evening because this is typically a huge lead time this I would have been shocked if we would have got this to you guys in August right so uh so I'm grateful for you guys for for stepping up and 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 doing that for us and once again I want to thank all you guys for your support and uh you know guidance in this and uh I think it's gonna be a real winner so with that
Thank you question so council member Hauser
Sure Ben and Christine and everyone seriously this is a phenomenal project everything that you guys have put together we appreciate how much time it takes and what you've done in that short amount of time um from my point of view all the numbers seem to 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 work they match up and I appreciate your commitment to the streets as well in addition to the farmer's market and those other projects so um we'll certainly have more discussion but I'm certainly in support and would make a motion to support the motion or I'm sorry to support the asks that you brought in
Thank you for that
Yes Uh council member Jones
Yeah I have just two quick questions budget related
Yep
Um the first one is um for fiscal year ending June twenty fourth there's half a million in the line for the farmer's market
Yes ma'am
Is that from the previous project or is half that part of that half million stuff you're doing for this new project
This is that five oh five seven fifty is comprised of this four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the down payment to buy the place fifty grand in closing costs one hundred seventy five thousand estimated uh for build out this would be demolition and just stuff uh and then fifteen seven fifty is our first mortgage payment
Perfect thank you
Yeah
And then this is just a weird inquiry in mind question just so you guys know I looked at the whole budget so this is pervy mid um last year on the insurance line there was eighty two thousand four hundred seventy eight and it's now dropped way way low is there something that changed dramatically it's like sixteen thousand now
Gotcha Mr. Director I think there was I think there was I think there was I think there was a settlement there that was driving that so
Okay fair enough
I could be wrong but that's
Yes like uh the two things that come to mind one there was a a settlement that was one piece the other one is the transition from uh for the health insurance if it's health insurance from fully insured to self we had a huge payout and settlement in that last year to pay out the self insured and that gets split across all of the departments so then there would have been a large increase uh probably thirty thousand or so for normal-ish uh uh just for that one purpose
Perfect
One of those two
That's that's fine that's good thank you I appreciate it that was it
Super
Further questions
I just was gonna make a motion
Council member Trent
Yeah I was gonna make a motion to approve the DDA budget as presented I've seen it a couple of times I think you guys did a really good job of making it all fit
Christian already made the motion so
Oh you made a motion oh oops sorry where did my mind go I guess I support
Motion by council member Hauser support by council member Trent further discussion Madam Clerk the role please
Bixson
Yes
Salvia
Yes
Hauser
Yes
Jones
Yes
King
Yes
Trent
Yes
Yay
Go forward
Thank you thank you for your hard work everyone's hard work
Thank you
Thanks again
It wasn't so hard was it
Only took you an hour
Yeah
Alright next
They're gonna kick you in the shins
Next we go couldn't resist it Next is a presentation from the Principal Shopping District Fiscal Year two thousand twenty five budget
Here again Okay so I'm gonna have So um we've talked about PSD before when we talked about the renewal and you set the public hearing and since public hearing is coming up on May thirteenth I figured we'll be talking more about the actual assessment then but I thought that tonight I wanted to focus a little bit more on what the budget includes because this would have been the normal presentation that we would do whether it was renewal year or not uh what's coming around is what I lovingly refer to as the Nancy Salvia easy to read budget that she always loves me to do because as you know our budget paperwork it's hard when you look at a budget like ours that has revenue and expenditure for the same item to really understand how the budget works and so we create this little easy to read so I'm just gonna go over briefly um the events and promotions that we're planning to include in the fiscal year twenty five budget and then go down the list of the revenue versus expenditures and then answer any questions related to those uh of course that's our farmer's market and I just think that's the happiest goat I've ever seen so I just thought that'd be a fire I thought that'd be fun tonight um yes so um our proposed events uh starting in uh July one twenty twenty five so um first says cross festival with a little asterisk for pending county involvement uh they're a little cagey with us whether or not they want to fire and ice with us or not so the budget is proceeding without their assistance but who knows as Jenna will tell you we're all on one path and all of a sudden we get a call for Dave Vanderveen and everything stops so we'll let you know uh farmer's market of course uh Deckard which uh is actually in process right now Makers Market our traditional sidewalk sales dancing in the street movies in the moonlight our live mannequin event Rochester Post the Halloween Fest which includes the downtown Halloween parade as well as the Halloween Fest that I feel like is gonna get an upgrade once the gram is built uh the bustle of trees of course uh La Niobe with fireworks we'll talk about that uh Big Bright Light Show Plaid Friday and Small Business Saturday the downtown cookie stroll Chris Kringle Market Caroling in the City and Pancakes and PJs those are the events we have planned but of course the PSD does more than events we also do promotions and marketing so also included in the budget is Foodie February uh which we actually won a national award from American Express uh for our order in help out challenge uh we came in first in the nation which we're pretty proud of so Foodie February's been continuing since then uh the In Town Magazine that goes out twice a year the Rochester Explorers Club which we do in partnership with the city and it's celebrating its ten year anniversary this year uh Taste of Fall Magical Murals Tour which is all pop up murals that we do in the month of September and early October tying in with the Taste of Fall uh the ever popular Snowman Stroll we back for its third year our holiday gift card BOGO Challenge you've ever seen that lying down Main Street on West four hundred block that's us um and then of course all of our uh social media channels we have multiple on both on Facebook on Instagram um and on TikTok uh our downtown texting service which restarted a few years ago with a grant from Main Street Oakley County and has been continuing and Jenna how many texting numbers do we have over eighteen hundred that we're able to send out and communicate about all of our events and promotions our downtown business directory that we uh publish once a year and is distributed in all the downtown businesses and our place and of course our website downtownrochestermi.com but all that comes down to since this is a budget presentation it comes down to numbers so I put it up here but then I printed it for you because it's a little small on the screen um so as I stated the way that the PSD budget works is a little different than other budgets because it's not like we get money and then we spend it we get money and we leverage it through sponsorships and advertising and donations and merchandise sales and anything we can possibly think of to leverage the base that we get from the budget and so this is the breakdown of all of that and how that works so indulge me I'll run through since we have some new council members I want to make sure everybody um understands what we're doing and then if you have questions along the way feel free to stop me as we go um okay so first one is our sidewalk sales right here um revenue is uh through sponsorships and outside of Rochester business um reservations we do allow rental spaces we only have a few of those available but we do charge for that if you're not in the downtown district um and then expenditures the advertising and event costs uh dancing in the street revenue at twenty five hundred expenditures at eleven thousand that's bringing in the band all the tents getting the restaurants electrical all those fun things uh La Niobe you'll see um a jump in the expenditures this year because you may recall at the fiftieth anniversary of La Niobe um in addition to closing Main Street which we already do have approval for our of our holiday events on Main Street from MDOT uh we had fireworks and uh that was originally just something for the fiftieth and we had sponsorships for that uh I was in contact with John Fox who is our presenting sponsor for the Big Bright Light Show and he has committed that he would like fireworks going forward at La Niobe to go and I quote on his tab so we said sure so we have but we have to account for it in the budget because we write the check but then he pays us back so you'll see there's an increase in both revenue and expenditures this year but it's a pass through uh the Chris Kringle Market you notice that the numbers are higher but that's for two different reasons uh one we are hoping to expand the Chris Kringle Market which we know a lot of people have asked us about over the years so we coming around the corner so that allows us to bring in more tents which is an extra expenditure but then it also allows us the opportunity to generate more dollars both from a sponsorship perspective and from a vendor fee perspective and we're hoping grabbing more people will hopefully then also increase uh the revenue in the beer and wine tent as well um Big Bright Light Show we raised seventy five thousand dollars for that event currently expenditures of three hundred fifty thousand that is everything door to door for the lights to happen 350,000, that is everything door to door for the lights to happen, except for La Niob. The Winter and Spring Magazines, the revenue is from selling ads within the magazine, we sell display ads, quarter page, half page, full page, and coupon ads as well, and then we have gift guides in there, so there are ways, anyone in the PSD can participate for free by donating an item that we photograph for them and then return to them and place in the magazine, or if they prefer to have something that's a little bit more personalized, they could purchase a coupon ad, or if they want to go that much further, they can actually do display advertising. We put those out in the winter and spring, and those goes out to 43,000 homes in Rochester, Rochester Hills, and Oakland Township. Our Annual Awareness Program, this is mostly our Channel 7 buy that we do for the holidays, in addition to what they do with us at La Niob, this is the package where in addition to running ads as commercials, we also do a cooperative opportunity for the businesses to get by 60 seconds of a live spot, it looks live, but we actually pre-record them, sorry if I just broke the third wall here, but we record those ahead of time, and so it gets them the opportunity for $500 to get a one-minute commercial on Channel 7, which you can't buy for $500. So we have that program there, still says fire and ice here, but Frost Festival, you name it, whatever it is, so we do have more expenditures in there, because we are taking on the bulk of what the county used to bring to the table, obviously that does not include doing a big party tent and all those things that they used to do and all the sports that they provide, because we just don't have the infrastructure to do that, but it does bring us all of the ice sculptures, it brings us the carving competition, and we added a retail component to that as well. Caroling in the City, which I think everyone's familiar with, one of the other times that we do close Main Street, so that one will be happening in mid-December. Makers Market, which was a huge hit last year, that's continuing this year, coming up in June, and so this budget is actually projected for next year's Makers Market, with revenue from vendor fees and sponsorships, and then expenditures for other things that go on with that event, including anything that we're doing there, and we bring in artists to do pop-ups and things like that, and there's some cool things we're doing at this year's event. Movies in the Moonlight, the expenditures on this actually went up in the budget last year, because the company that had been with us doing Movies in the Moonlight for almost 20 years, he retired, how dare he, and with his retirement also went our very highly discounted rate, so we have another great person, a great company that is providing our services, but unfortunately, we don't have the lower price that we had previously. Downtown Trick or Treat and Halloween, which I think are self-explanatory, Deckard, which is going on right now, that we have over 400 ducks registered to be a part of Deckard each year, and it's great, you see, you know, elementary school kids all the way up to professional artists doing that event with us. Rochester Post, which is our live mannequin event, super fun night downtown, provided that it doesn't rain, it's a lot more fun, but the people in the windows are dry, so that's all good. Farmer's Market, revenue and expenditure, we're proud to say for this coming market season, Ascension Providence Rochester has signed on to be our presenting sponsor once again for the market, and we're hoping to keep that relationship going, they keep getting purchased and merging with all these other hospitals, so we keep going and they keep saying yes, and we certainly do appreciate that support. Explorers Club, as I mentioned, those costs are for the lanyards and the buttons for the kids, and then the merchants pay a small fee to be in Explorer Station, and I know that's a popular thing over here at City Hall. Small Business Saturday, that also goes along with Plaid Friday, that's for tote bags and more activities that we can do to activate Small Business Saturday for the merchants. Taste of Fall, this actually bookends with Foodie February, again, trying to support the businesses, both Foodie February and Taste of Fall came out of COVID, are still very popular, and people always tell us that it helps them remember to use downtown, to come to the restaurants, to get carryout, things like that. You'll notice year over year, our Taste of Fall budget has continued to trend down, because we're finding that people are more wanting to scan a QR code than they are to come pick up the actual brochure, so we're trying to spend money in other places. The Downtown Cookie Stroll, which is wildly popular, you'll notice a dip in the expenditures, because we found a new cookie tin provider that we could actually get our cookie tins a little bit cheaper. So we're always looking at every dollar to make sure we're spending it effectively, and what can we do? Snowman Stroll, this will be our third annual, the 7500, we're proud to say that Chief Financial, as a part of their annual agreement with us, is now the presenting sponsor for the Snowman Stroll, and that will include the reception that I think Debbie and Marilyn came to last year that we did up at Chief Financial in their community room, where you can meet the artists and get a sneak preview of some of the snowmen. Pancakes and PJs, which is a super fun little fundraiser that Chief John continues to let me invade his fire station, he's shaking his head, I think that's a yes, I'll just take it. So we have families that come in and coordinating PJs, we've been doing a Grinch theme these last couple of years, not sure if that's going to stick, we might try something different, Fun Balloon Arch with a photo spot, we have a kids' activity, and then of course, pancakes, but not just any pancakes, when we bring in the whipped cream and the sprinkles and all that, and so we make it extra special. And then last but not least, the Magical Murial Tour, another thing that came out of COVID, pop-up mural event, where muralists dedicate their time and talents, we provide the board, they provide the talent, and then we pop them up all over downtown, we're getting close to having over 20 this coming year, and so these expenditures are strictly for the actual boards themselves. So that is essentially the budget as a whole, and trying to show you the offset of how we do business, so that it isn't just that we just write a check for something, we're always trying to find a way to lower our expenditures and find ways to leverage our events, because we know that there's a lot of value to people to be a part of our brand, and so we always try to play, provide as many opportunities, whether they're free, at a low cost, or even a higher cost, like something that Chief Financial does or fucks with presenting sponsorships, we try to make sure we have something that makes it accessible to everyone.
Councilmember Jones?
I just want to do a shout out, thank you for the Kris Kringle Market that you were kind in sharing with Raya and Rara, to work the mulled wine booth, which we adore, and we're working on our budget, and we every year include that really nice revenue we get from that fundraiser, so thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Your pro temp, Salvia?
Thank you, so I love the breakdown with this, obviously, but, and I heard you reference a couple of times, you can see the expenditures are down, so is there another column that we're going to see at some point in time that shows us what the expenditures and revenues were last year?
Yes.
Comparison?
Anthony has that, he's created that for me, is that in the?
He just stepped out for a minute, yeah.
Anthony has that, I have seen that, I assume that it was in the previous budget, but it will be a part of the PSD renewal packet for the May 13th meeting, that shows you the past.
So we'll see it sometime between now and May 13?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony, hi. The question was, you know that cute spreadsheet you sent me that shows previous year's expenditures versus revenue, is that in the budget packet, or will that be in the renewal packet for the 13th meeting?
It is in the budget packet as well.
All right, so you already have it, but we will call it out for the meeting on the 13th.
Yeah, we'll pull it out for sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Yes.
Just from.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, thanks. Just from, yeah, thank you for this, it's very, very helpful always to see revenue and expenditures, and I know that you guys do a really good job of leveraging and sponsorships and, yeah, making money on, on, on events, so it looks like you've got about $43,000 that you're pulling in on the, on the revenue, is that, is that where that was going, or maybe I'm reading it wrong, the total?
Do you have totals for those two columns?
I don't have it with me, but this, when you look, I've got like the 60, the 75, all that, without the PSD, what we're raising is about 300,000.
Oh, okay.
Because then we have 200,000 that's transferred from DDA.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And then we have the PSD assessment itself, but we, anywhere from a quarter million to 300,000 each year that we raise in revenue.
Okay, that's great, yeah, good, good job.
Further questions? So we're going to talk, are you going to talk about the increase, or are you going to do that at the?
We're going to do that the 13th, so I did that at the last meeting, when we asked for public hearings, so I didn't want to make you guys go through that again, so I figured I'd focus on budget for this one, since whether it was renewal year or not, that's what we would have done, and then I'll be back on the 13th with a full packet with the renewal.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A lot of stuff, a lot of good stuff.
Yes, I will close all of our windows.
Okay. Thank you, all right, next is approval of the minutes, is a consideration of the regular meeting of March 25, 2024, April 8, 2024, and the special meeting of March 23, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes for those three meetings, and there was a typo that I sent to Clerk O'Connor, and she has received and made.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, next is the approval of the consent agenda, first is a consideration to approve the Bark and Brew 5K event, next is a consideration to approve the Hometown Hustle 5K and the One Mile Color Fun Run, next is a consideration to approve the Detroit Pots Walk and 5K event, lots of running, next is a consideration to approve the Sidewalk Sale Event, next is a consideration to approve the Movies in the Moonlight Event, and consideration to approve the Dancing in the Streets Event. Counsel.
Okay. Are we making a motion for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, do we have a motion?
Any questions or a motion?
I'm certainly happy to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda items A through F.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hauser, support by Councilmember Trent for items A through F, which are all the items.
Pretty much it, a lot of running and some events. There's a lot of 5Ks.
Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, no, there's no old business state items, there are not any public hearing, there's not any legislative deliberation, first is reports and regular visits, is consideration of the budget fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, and to schedule a public hearing for May 13, 2024. Mr. City Manager, I see the Finance Director coming up, do you want to comment?
I'd like to kick her off, absolutely. Monumental effort, just what Christie and Ben and their group went through, monumental effort, you all know the monumental effort that went through to get to preparing a budget. I know Anthony will play it down, but his role, Marcy's role, Finance Committee's role, City Council's role, every department head's role, this doesn't work this way, breaking down a zero-based budget without everybody digging in, taking it serious, take the time, and get it right, and we don't, we do win awards for that reason, we constantly win the highest awards that we can get, because those people look at it from the outside and understand, to get to that level, you have to be thorough, you have to be transparent, and I'm proud of the effort that this city overall does to get to this document right here. I'm proud of the fact that council challenges every single year, I call it a zero-based budget, it's, don't take anything for granted, look for every single dollar. As Anthony goes through the presentation, you can see, we're not flush with money on a year-to-year basis. I'm also proud to say that we never count on what we think is going to happen in the future, we all know that at some point, some of these developers are going to start pulling the trigger on some of these things, that will be large, hundreds of thousands of dollars in perpetuity into our general fund, that's, that's the bright light at the end of this, but we do not budget that way, and I think that's fiscally conservative, I think that's exactly the way to do it. I love the fact that every year we look at our policies, we adjust what we think is the appropriate policy, and that, the Budget Committee, that's, that's a tough committee, because all the hard work gets ground out down there, and nobody takes a answer of, oh, that's how we always did it, never, and I want the public to know that's watching this, it's every single dollar, every single penny is accounted for and justified as we go through this. We, staff comes in with, we have $6 million that we were asking for, not thinking we would get it, but to let the people know that read the document, our leaders, that down the line, these are the things that we're planning for as times get better, and also the fact that we can flip on a switch, COVID, and look what we did there, we survived a parking system that could have fallen apart, partnerships with outside organizations, very proud of the granting opportunities we get, we, the overarching thing that sticks in my brain for years has been, you guys don't talk enough about what we do collectively, we don't brag enough, that's not who we are, but grant-wise, we get millions of dollars in grants here, and not all communities do that, that's from our engineers, to our consultants, to the staff, fire department, police department, everybody's looking under rocks for any money we can get, council people come up with ideas, planning commissioners come up with ideas, ZBA people, it's amazing how everybody takes into the fact that we are proud of our tax rate, that we can go against anybody else, we don't raise it, we don't, we don't take it for granted, those dollars that come in, so it's a great story led by our treasurer, you know, Anthony has recognized at the highest level what he does in his personal and professional career, and we're happy to have him and proud of the way that he keeps us on task, and we stay on time, and in fact, we're early, two weeks this year, so that we can present this, and then we'll have our public hearing on May 13th, so Mr. Mayor, with that, if Anthony would like to take it away?
Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor Nick and Council, we are happy to present a fiscal year end 25 budget, every year, you know, or may not know, we always come up with a different theme for the budget each year, the theme this year is progress leadership, change is inevitable, but intelligent change is progress. The thing that's a little bit different with municipalities versus perhaps maybe in your personal finances, is the city doesn't have an end, so it's things like roads, as soon as you're done doing all of them, you have to start right back over again, and that will continue on in perpetuity going forward, so the way you budget, the way you think about things, moving needles, making progress, is a little bit different, and that was why we kind of solidified that, is that'd be a good theme for this year, we have a lot of new council members, we have new ideas, we have new projects, we have new things we're moving forward with, as you heard a bunch of them already before me tonight presented, so there's these things that are coming down the pipeline that we're getting ahead of, and that we want to talk about and recognize to make sure the city is in good position in all aspects, economically, financially, as one of the oftentimes top 10, or top 50, or top whatever it is, municipalities to live, or do business, or have a family, all of those things, we want to keep that going. In the budget, there is sections for every single department, whether it's fire, police, finance, the city manager, city council, obviously, the policy setting, there's different sections in each of the budget, and that gives a description of every single service that that department is responsible and provides for. We're a municipality, what we do is provide services, that is our function in life as a municipality, is to provide services, and you can see what services are provided, who's responsible for those services, and then how much those services cost, as well as if there's any metrics to those, those are displayed, to, to cover what we're looking at doing coming up in the budget, as well as what we did in the prior year of the accomplishment, so we always try to keep that transparent in a focal point, as Nick mentioned, the policies, those are all, all the city policies, financial related, are all in the budget, and those are reviewed annually to make sure that we have a really good view, at least once a year, sometimes we'll review the policies, you know, more than once if something comes up that we, you know, need to make a change, but otherwise, it's, it's just annually. The process itself, you know, my philosophy has always been, the budget is not a static document, it's not something you do once a year, and you say, hey, we're going to have a one-goals and objectives, we're done for the year, we'll see you next year, and let us know when it's time for that next meeting. You'll have noticed that, you know, the, I put a lot of emphasis in the quarterly reports, making sure that the budget and what's happening to the city with the decisions and contracts and the impacts are always updated every single quarter, that's why when you get to things like now, you're look, you look at it and you go, well, there's not a lot of changes from what we're looking at, and there shouldn't be, you know, that's, that's why we try to stay on top of that, and make sure we're getting things in, and as, as accurate as we can. We start off everything from a SWAT, you know, with city council, do a SWAT analysis, we update that, we look at our policies that are going to govern kind of how we're going to create the budget, and make sure what gets approved and doesn't get approved, that is all done early on in the fall, and then that gives us a setup in time and milestone for as we move forward throughout the budget, to the presentation, and then to the adoption. Obviously, our two-page schedule is, is kind of a testament to that, and there's something every single quarter, and that's the, the different colors there, the green and, and blue and that, is every quarter, there's something for the budget that we're doing, whether it's prep work, staff work, doing an analysis, doing RFPs, whatever that is, that's constantly, all of the time, all year, there's not, there's not an end to it, there's never really a start, you're just in it, and it just keeps going around, and around, and around, and we just stay on top of that as we move forward throughout the years. stay on top of that as we move forward throughout the years. So we did the updated SWAT for this year. That sets kind of the tone on when we look at like discretionary projects, as Nick mentioned, you know, you had $6 million worth of, of asks at the beginning. Well, we look at it, we go, okay, how do those asks fit into some of the SWAT categories? What are they addressing? Are they just things that, do we need to do them? Or is there a legal requirement to do them? Or is it an enhancement or something that fits and addresses the SWAT, whether it's jumping on an opportunity, looking at a, reinforcing a strength, addressing a weakness? What do those discretionary items do and how do they address it? And then that's how we kind of build it and, and look at the ask and requests from that. Infrastructure, never-ending. You'll see a lot of really big emphasis on infrastructure projects. You know, when you, when you walk around the city, everything you see, whether it's the road, the sidewalk, the parks, the, the signs, the, you know, everything that you see, that's, that's the city, right? That's mainly DPW is in charge of a lot of that. If you need services, police and fire, that, that is there, ready to go should the need arrive for those. What we've, we kind of put together this year that's new, we did it in the winter tax bill mailing. So those may have seen in the tax bill, there was an insert, the one this past winter, that had a map, and those were all the completed projects. So we looked and said, okay, what did we complete in '23? Not think we were going to do and didn't do, like, what did we actually complete? So we can say, hey, these are all the things we did in the year with the tax dollars. This being the budget, this is kind of the front part of it. This is the, here's all the things we have in the budget that we want to do in the upcoming budget. So plan on having this as an insert in the summer tax bill is obviously that's where the city collects its finances to even have some items going out to show like, hey, what are your tax dollars getting? And there's a breakout for everything from roads and bridges to infrastructure, streets, all of that is highlighted. If it had, in this case, a physical location, there's, you know, 911 services, that, that's not a location, so that's not on here, but these are just some of the things that you could, when we do it, go drive and look at it. You can go see that we did those enhancements. That's what this, this map is showing, and you should all have the handouts in front of you too, because it's, obviously on the screen is a little bit hard to look at. With that, there's some call-outs of what I would consider some significant things in the budget. So these are things that are projects that are more than just we're doing another road or anything. It's something large, it's something exciting, it's something that, that is going to change either how services are provided or maintaining the quality and services that we're looking at. First one on the list is a call-out is obviously the community house. So in the discussions, we're looking at doing bond funding for that project, looking at a, to be presented soon from Alan, the director of the community house, to give you details of what that not to exceed $2 million is going to look like. But that's just a, it, it just goes to show everyone just how important even services that, like the community house provides, it's not a division of the city, we don't have a community house department, but it's that partnership that we, we have essentially built the foundation of the city on with Dinosaur Hill and the library and rah-rah. It's these partnerships to get these best services provided. This will allow a lot of updated functionality, new space. I know Alan's got a whole bunch of new programming that he wants to do, and all of that is serving our nonprofits and, and in the area, regionally too, this, this whole area here, the nonprofits, the residents, and businesses. So that, that is a really cool project that you will hear more of as soon as Alan's ready for that one. Next up, obviously skate park. We, yes, yeah.
Can we applaud?
Applaud for skate park. So that is one that we're also looking at doing in that same bond. So we're looking at a $2.5 million bond that we'll walk through as we get to that stage to look at it. $2 million would be community house, and then $500,000 would be for skate park. The, this is really a grassroots effort of something that, that really started in the community, saying, we want this, we want this, and now we're putting that forward to say, all right, we've heard you, we've tried so many different grants, it's, it's just hard to get those. So it's just one of those, we've hit a point where if we're going to do it, we just need to do it. The grant options are, are just very limited. I'd be remiss to point out that if you also were not aware, one of the services provided by the police department is at their open house, you can get helmets, which I very much recommend.
Thank you.
Thank you for stock photos, but you can get your kid.
No helmet. That needs a helmet on.
You can get a helmet for your kid because no one, I'm, I'm even a proponent for adults, you should not be doing things like skateboarding or anything. So come to the police department open house and get your, your free helmet there.
Great.
Moving forward, another one that we did this last year, council approved us to do what we were calling Phase One for Dinosaur Hill. So that was where, this, this is an actual picture, this isn't, this isn't a stock photo. This is them actually doing it, where they, they, we weren't doing all of Dinosaur Hill because there's a lot of off-paths and that. This is just the main section, just the main connectors and loop is, is all we're looking at doing. So if you're familiar with Dinosaur Hill, it kind of from where the bridge is east to the actual building, that loop was what was done, and that was all that was planned to be doing on that east loop. We're not doing the back section that goes up by the houses, it was just to do that main walking loop. This would be doing kind of two parts. So there's the west of the bridge, so if you were on the Pink Creek Trail, you could come down on the path like this that would be done, and you'd be able to go down to the bridge, cross the bridge, stay on the path all the way through Dinosaur Hill. We want to leave on the south end those kind of like walking, I don't know, more hiking paths. We're not touching those.
Natural.
Yet, leave it natural. It's a nature preserve, right?
Exactly.
But we want to make some easy walking paths. When we did this project, I, because I'm, I'm in there almost every week, you know, the, even the residents, everyone had, they were like, thank you so much for that. They're like, it's so much easier, I didn't realize on my ankles and on this, how much easier it is to walk, I don't have to, I'm not tripping. So it's, it's a nice enhancement that, that people really responded and resonated with. So it's a nice, a nice improvement. So that will be on the west side, and then we're also looking at connecting the trail from Dinosaur Hill over to, it's kind of hard without the map, but it kind of connects over to Maple Grove by DPW and down to where the skate park would be. So kind of with the skate park and the pathway, you could come from, from the Pink Creek Trail, you can come through Dinosaur Hill. If you're in the neighborhood, you'll have nice paths that you can actually come all the way through to Hallback Field, JC Field, the skate park, the community garden, the, you know, all of those areas, it'll be a nice, easy path and connector throughout there. So we're excited to have that as, as, in the budget as an enhancement on that one. Here is a picture up close of the city continuing the canine program. Obviously, we had these ceremonies and that for the retirement for Kit and Pearl recently. And so this is now Officer Penman was selected to be the new handler for the canine program. So we have, we have gotten Kit, oh my God, Kit. Maverick, I'm going to keep calling it Kit, it's going to be Kit forever. Maverick, I will get that. Maverick is now with Officer Penman. So now we're going to schedule for the training and the academy and the other items that go with it over the summer here so that we can get the program back up. It, it's been popular since the start of it, at every event, the schools, the open houses, just being out in the park, you know, having that canine thing, everybody, you know, with pets resonates with that. So, well, we wanted to make sure to keep that, that program going past, past the retirements. Next item on the list, the SCBA, so the self-contained breathing apparatuses. So this is equipment that allows the firefighters to breathe, it's, they're like air bottles. If it was underwater, it'd be scuba, that's the U for underwater. So this is, we're not underwater usually. So that will, that allows them to have updated air packs. They've reached kind of an end of life with them. They're still safe, everything's still fine with them, that's why we've been planning for this. We've been turned down for three years with grants. We have not received those for three. We've changed tactics this year, and we're doing it regionally. So we, we've entered in with other departments to do a regional grant. It seemed in the prior year that when FEMA's reviewing them, they seem to like regional items a little bit more, it seemed, than just individual projects being awarded. So we're hoping that at least by mid-September, we will have, we will have heard for this re, this regional request, which will be the fourth request. The reason it's in the budget is because we've kind of hit that point where, okay, if we don't get the grant funding now, we have to do it. We, we really can't keep pushing it out. The, the parts are getting harder to find. There now, there's new standards for, for the packs to do for safety. It's like, it's, it's time to, time to upgrade and update those. So we've, you know, everybody's safe, and there's no, no worries or anything like that, but it, it's just, it's going to become time. So we have that in the budget. If we get the grant, great. If we don't, we're well aware of what's happening, and it's there to, to purchase those. The request that Nick was talking about earlier is kind of like the project matrix. So we internally kind of throw all of our asks together, and then we bounce it off each other at, at a staff, special staff meetings to see like, okay, do you really need this? When do you need this? Why do you think you need this? You know, you got to prove it to each other first, and obviously ultimately to Nick before it gets brought to city council. So that, you know, the six million, the, the asks that were original and, and that were reduced by half or more to what actually made the cut to the budgets. So it's not just everything that was asked for is given, that is definitely not the case. It is very much scrutinized, ranked, pushed back and forth against each other, looking for alternative ideas, different ways to, to maybe accomplish those things before it comes forward. But we're always planning. Some brief overview items, so general fund, 17.1 upcoming year, 17.1 million, 68% of that is from taxes for the city. And then we look at like state returns and other items that comprises the remainder of that, building permits and electrical permits and all that sort of stuff. So the, the bulk of what the city receives is taxes. That's why it is very important that we look at, you know, protecting the tax base, doing these investments in services, because that's what makes those bases stay strong and continue to grow, is keeping that, those high-quality services provided and not cutting those things as we go. Expenses, 16.9 million, which if you were keeping track from the prior side, is less than the 17.1, which is a good thing. And what that looks like, broken out in departments, you know, the bulk of them, police, 28%, fire, 18%, DPW, 14%. I, I emphasize those mainly because, as I said earlier, we are a service provider, right? So the bulk of the budget and expenses makes sense that they are for services. When we look at the 10% appropriations to other funds that's up there on the top, those are the infrastructure transfers. That's money we're sending to roads or facilities, it could be water, it could be whatever the projects are. So the majority of the funds are going to those services. Sanitation's its own call-out there, 5%, environmental, 2%. So you look at it, it's like we are a service providing organization. And then, of course, we have, you know, Finance Department, 5%, manager, you know, the management side of it, but it's a very small piece of the pie. Library at 4%, you know, we, we contract like, we, with different entities, whether it's, you know, Dinosaur Hill that we send funds to, the library that we have a contract with, rah-rah that we, you know, those are earmarked in monies that we sent out, they're not city departments. So that's all part of where those monies go to. As we look, every year, we look at cost savings. So even when things are looking good, we never stop looking at how can we do things better or more efficient or cheaper? Is there a substitute? Is there a better way to do it? Is there a more efficient way? We've talked in, in what's approved, one of the items, right, the trackless trailer for DP, tractor for DPW, being able to provide still the leaf curb collecting services with reduced injuries for workers comp, more faster way to deliver those services. We're always looking at ways and investing into those efficiencies. This is one of those items where it's the comparison of the prior budget originally approved, so a year ago, the original, to the current one now, looking at differences that are plus or minus 15,000, so more than 15,000 or a change of more than 15 decrease and 5%. That's what are kind of our benchmark we've been looking at, and that gives a nice range that it's not, you're getting granular, like we dropped miscellaneous income by 100 bucks, so we're going to show it. We're trying to keep things that are relevant in the city's, you know, $17 million budget on that. So that's, that's in the back section. This is just a snippet of the first page. Also new this year, I don't know if we get like, I don't know, like a membership or jackets or something, but the city's taxable value has passed now $1 billion. So it's an arbitrary milestone, but, but it's, you know, I don't know, maybe we can have some fireworks or something for it.
Yeah, I think so.
It's just, it just shows that, like, when we look at the state equalized value, 1.3 million, taxable one, it's, it's, that's the result of the city investing and keeping this community and services where they're at, right? It doesn't, not every community gets to keep increasing, not every community as small as the city gets to a billion dollars.
No.
There's plenty that aren't. But it just shows that this is where people want to be and do business and come to and buy houses and do all of those things. So it's, it's a, it's just something to keep note of as we move through that. The breakdown in the millage, so the red, it's almost impossible to read that, I know, but the, the red part is OPC, so that's considered a city service, even though they have a separate millage for it, so it's listed on here. The green part in there, the .94, that's infrastructure. So that was when council had said, you know what, we need to address infrastructure, we don't have enough in just the general fund to send more money to infrastructure, but we need it. So they, they internally, it's an earmark that says, okay, when we levy the millage rate, we want that .94, is going to go to infrastructure. We don't want it for operating, we don't want it for anything else, it's going to get earmarked for infrastructure. So that's a separate breakout. Then that bottom part, the blue, which as you can see since on the graph here goes back to 15, has been 11.5964 since, and that's basically the, the operating part on the city side. So all those breakouts that we had in the expenditures come out of that, the 68%, this is the breakdown for that one. When we look at essential services, so one thing we look at each year is, okay, every community does things differently. They have a different way of billing, as an example, trash services. So when we look at essential services, we're looking at trash, water, sewer, police, fire, EMS. It's the stuff that, no matter where you move to, you expect those services, right? I better have a police department, I better have EMS, I better have fire, I better have trash, you know, water, all those sort of things. So what we do is we take out of each of the community's budgets and we convert them into millage rates. So as an example, Rochester Hills, we cover our trash internally out of the general fund. The Hills does not. They get a bill every two week, two months, excuse me, to pay for the trash services. So what we do is we say, okay, well, if we invert that into a millage and add it on, that's, you still need trash service. Whoever pays for it, whether it's out of your taxes or out of your, every two months you're paying a bill, you still need it. So we group those things together and turn it into a millage rate to say, okay, for the essential services, what does that look like if we try to equalize those things in comparison? So as of, of now, we always, the city, I think, is pretty prideful in it that we're able to offer a lot of amenities and services and things that are still extremely competitive in comparison to other larger cities. So just a note on that one that I, I think it just goes to show that the stewardship that council has on, on making sure and overseeing the budget, you know, that's, that shows. There's other data points and that, like that, that shows that it's working and being done. OPEB and pension, so these are, last year, we'll get new numbers in May for pensions, so we're at 127% on OPEB, pensions at 87.7. As of, as of the last year, we did make some changes with how we look at doing the amortization schedule with MERS. They have a lot of nuances in kind of how they smooth things and do things, so some of those are in our control. So when we get the new one, those changes will be in effect for the one that we get coming up next, next month. On a high note, you'll see later, I think, well, very soon, you'll see the award for Memorial Grove All Abilities Park. So here's another fun thing with grants, is it, it moves at the speed of, I don't know, snail's pace, I guess. So, you know, we're a few years, two or three years in, and that's just kind of how long it takes to navigate requirements and getting through it. So we're ready to award and get this project actually awarded and going. So you'll see that later on in the packet. And then we will have the, the Ludlow, Memorial Ludlow, the Ludlow side by community house. And then, um, we will have the, uh, uh, the Ludlow, Memorial, uh, the Ludlow side by community house, the totlot one, that one, we're still working through the process. That we received in twenty-two. Um, we still don't have a grant agreement, but we're working through it. Um, so we're hoping, um, uh, talking with the, uh, the feds, um, probably in the next four months, we should have a grant agreement. Um, so we're planning just the way the season's going. Everything's, Aseoga has ready to bid. It's probably going to be spring before it gets built. So we'll, we're kind of tentatively gauging that. And we'll see on the RFP when we issue it. If they can do it this year, great, but we're about at the finish line for that one. So that's just, um, an update that, you know, you kind of see it in every single budget each year because it's just kind of this on, this ongoing.
How many times in the state of the city can I say to, it's coming. One more time, I guess.
One more time.
One more. You'll see it, but you'll, you'll have it awarded by then. Uh, so with that, the way.
Excuse me, question, uh, Councilmember King?
Do we have like a committee or who's, who's doing the park designs and all that?
For like the Memorial Grove and those?
Memorial Grove and the, yeah, and the totlot.
Yeah. So for those, um, the, it's the grants require specific things. So that we've been doing internally. If they need, like, all of these are going to be all abilities. So there's certain, they want to see certain sensory things. They want certain impacts for the, uh, the, uh, um, the surface material. So we basically kind of work a little bit backwards. We say, okay, this is the sandbox we have to play in. Uh, it, this is what the rules we have to follow. What can we get for that? And then we partnered up, uh, with Snyder Recreation. They're the ones that have done work originally. That's where we got them from was with Rochester Schools. They had done work for Rochester Schools for their playgrounds. Um, so we partnered with them to say, okay, you're used to governmental type of things and building these in, with grant dollars and that sort of stuff. So they helped design us. They said, okay, here's some of the, um, here's all the ideas. And then internally we talked, um, and actually we even went out in the park. I know I went out one time with Colin and Co- and Carl. I mean, we were talking to residents that were walking by and getting opinions on things. And, um, I mean, I personally went door to door for all the houses in that neighborhood and met with people to kind of see like what you want to see in it. And then that's kind of where the design came from. So we didn't really do like, uh, you know, we had to kind of work within it, the boundaries, but that's, that's kind of where those, those designs ended up coming from.
I, I haven't seen the, the totlot one. Just what was kind of shared on the Memorial Grove. I, I thought this was.
Here's a rendition of it.
I just, I felt like it was a little underwhelming. Um, you look at, and maybe I'm, I'm harsh because I'm comparing it to, you know, what we have in Rochester Hills and what they've done with Innovation Hills.
Oh, yeah.
And you've got like five, maybe there were five or six pieces of equipment kind of just spread out, thrown in an area.
Part of it was because the residents adjacent said, not too much noise over there. We don't want this to be the totlot by Ludlow. So we had to really play this one down.
And then the other piece is we didn't want to spend anything out of the city for that. So that meant that that budget for that was not to go above three hundred thousand. So by the time you factor in the ADA compliance and the surface, surface materials essentially half of the cost. By the time you put that in, you're left with a very limited amount for actual equipment. But with that, the way we've been doing these and working with the SEAL is if we want to add on at any point in time, you know, five thousand here for another piece of equipment or, you know, we are, we will be able to do that, um, as add-ons, but not as part of the original one.
And again, this one was a, a different one. This was again, don't affect the residents next door. They didn't even want three more parking spaces next to their property lines. So this one was a little lower key, but we can add more low-key things there. The other one was pretty robust. But not trying to compete with, with, with Brian did. That, that's a, that's a world-class park.
Oh, that's.
Ours is a laid back. This is municipal park. We don't want to change it too much and turn it into that. That's for sure.
I do like the, you know, glow in the dark sidewalk. I'd be pretty wild sad if we do that.
We'd get wiped out here if we did that.
Councilmember Trent, you had a question?
Well, to Sarah, uh, Councilmember, uh, King's point, is there like, so like spaces to, to then like fill in? Like you're, you're making it so that it has a space to add any, anything more? And, and I mean, we know it's not going to be like Innovation Hills, but I mean, it doesn't mean that we have to make it too, um, underwhelming, I guess.
And you'll see that on both because even when we get to, um, the Ludlow one, there's a lot to that one. And we, we, there's, you're going to see, even when it's done, you're going to see a lot of kind of open space and that's on purpose so that we can add equipment as we go each year. A few pieces here, a couple here until we can build it out. Cause we want to make sure to use all the money to get the infrastructure set. And then, cause adding equipment, you know, talking with Snyder Recreation, they're like, it, it's a lot easier if you get all the foundations, the drainage, the, the, even the surface material, get that in first. And then it's easy to add equipment after that.
Well, I, yeah, so I underfo- sir, understood from the get-go that there was a lot of, um, prep work for this project. So, I mean, yeah, I know that you guys have been working hard on it. So thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Thank you. So Treasure Maggio, best presentation yet. Thank you for your hard work on this budget as well as Marcy's. I know she would have been here, but she had a family commitment, important one. Um, so thank you for all of your hard work, all of administration hard work, every, every department. So, um, you know, I know we all have our, our budget binders and I know everyone's going through all their numbers and, uh, checking all their decimal points and, and all of that. So, um, you know, I look forward to, uh, the public hearing on the thirteenth. So I'd like to make a motion for the public hea- to set the public hearing for May thirteenth.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia. Is there support? Support by Councilmember Jones. Further comments? Councilmember Trent?
Well, beyond the park, the All Abilities Park, I, I would like to thank all, uh, you and all, and, and our fellow council members. And it was in the department heads and your financial team. I really appreciated this, uh, budget process this time. We had three meetings. I felt closer and more of a better understanding of it. And Councilmember King just kind of jumped right in and she had a lot of good input as well. And I think what I would say, uh, even though it's my art, I have an art background, it was a work of accounting art to do what you did. And I do admire you for that. The budget has been managed well. You had, we, you know, you know, you guys are just experts at this. And with no new taxes, we managed to get in a community house upgrade and a skate park that had been on the, you know, on an ask for, for a while, you know, people have been wanting that. And I, um, even had someone from Rochester Hills very excited about the community house upgrade and the, um, skate park. So, hey, we'll get a skate park and they'll get a dog park. So I do want to thank you for this. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hauser?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Banda and Anthony and Marcy, for someone who's gone through this just the first time after being a few months, I mean, this is the binder that we get to the public and this thing is incredibly comprehensive. It obviously takes an enormous amount of time. And, uh, you've made the process very easy for me to understand and you've made the process very accommodating. So I know when I've reached out to you for questions, you've been very prompt, you and your team. So again, thank you very much and, and to the public, the work absolutely cannot go unnoticed, what these people do to make sure that our city is streamlined and is efficient and economical as possible. So that's all I've got to say about that. And I, again, we'll see on May thirteenth.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome.
Anything further? I'd just like to thank everybody and I also like the city staff, also the, uh, our budget, uh, subcommittee, council people. I know you guys spent a lot of time, Councilmember Salvia, Mayor Protem Salvia, Councilmember Trent and Councilmember Sage. And I know that's a lot of work. And, um, you know, we continue to have balanced budgets in difficult times. So this is, uh, all good. So thank you and we will see you at the thirteenth. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one thing? Things that we don't see in this, all of that is the little things that make Rochester special. Things like relationships with Trail Unlimited, Clinton River Watershed, Paint Creek Trail Organization. The fact that we get to sell benches, every bench you see a plaque on there, that, that's part of the joy in my job. The stories behind something simple. None of those things cost the taxpayers a dime. They're all self-funded. The Butterfly Garden, everything we do there, we've, our Tree Bay program, we've been able to maximize those funds without the taxpayers paying for them. But those relationships, we have those outside organizations, they support us and, and we, we get great benefits. So that's the soft stuff that you don't get to see. And that kind of charges all of us up for those opportunities. So I just wanted to throw that in there. So, okay.
Uh, next is a consideration of bid approval for the bridge maintenance program. Uh, DPW Director Alex, welcome tonight.
Well, Mayor and Council. Um, so we held a foot bid opening on March fifth and amended bids were me submitted on April eighth for preventative maintenance work on the city's four vehicular bridges and nine pedestrian bridges. The lowest bidder was Pullman SST, SST with a total amount of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Um, AEW Engineering who put together the specs and will be doing inspections is recommending a ten percent contingency be added to that for a total of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, the GLs that this money will be coming from are listed above, um, pretty much split between major road funds and the DDA, uh, capital as some of these bridges are in the DDA district. Um, so AEW Engineering conducts inspections on the city's vehicular and pedestrian bridges on a routine basis. Um, you know, bridges are a very vital piece of city infrastructure. Um, in order to prevent expensive reconstruction and possible long-term closes, these types of routine preventative maintenance are required. Uh, this year's repair program mostly consists of concrete repairs, bridge deck repairs and joint sealing, uh, as well as wooden plank replacements on the two wooden, uh, bridges in Municipal Park and the one in Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve, which I think will look really nice with the upgraded trails too. Um, the level of work to be done on each bridge kind of varies by the level of deterioration that is present on each bridge. Uh, this work is to be completed this summer and will utilize funds from both the current fiscal year and fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five as it'll kind of span over, um, the July one mark. Um, this project's been discussed in the asset management committee. And hopefully that's all I have. Um, in your packet, there is a map showing where all of our bridges are located. Um, so the vast majority of these are pedestrian bridges. And then with the four vehicular bridges, um, with the re- with the inspections that AEW does, there is, there are other items that need to be worked on as well. Um, but for this first, uh, preventative maintenance project, we decided to focus on concrete repairs and joint sealing. Um, tackle those first and then as money's budgeted over a couple of years, um, we then tackle on more items.
Very good. Any questions, comments, council? Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Um, thank you for your presentation. This was reviewed in the asset management committee, um, with strong support. This is really good engineering work. Um, doing preventive maintenance on our bridges is important, just as you said. Uh, prevents us from having, um, significant costs later. Um, thank you for line item, the line iteming, the general ledger items. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, uh, the funding of not to exceed five hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen, uh, with the bid awarded to Pullman as presented.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia. Support by Councilmember Hauser.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Councilmember King?
Sorry, I was just reading through, you know, some of these and I just noticed like one in particular. Um, it's that section total alternate bid one, general one A through one C. And I just, they, you know, they came in substantially lower, which is great, like less money. But is there a reason, like aside, you know, from them just maybe charging less? Um, is there any difference in the amount of work that's going to be done? I, I just, like, I don't know that cheapest is always, I want to make sure we're getting good quality for what we're spending. And when something is that substantially lower, I just, it makes me question a little bit, like, are we missing something here? I just, I just want to have a little bit more. And you guys might have talked about it at the asset management meeting. I just wasn't a part of that.
I totally agree with you. You know, cheapest isn't always best. Um, that's when after we receive these bids, AW Engineering goes to all the unit pricing and they go through references that have to be submitted with their, with their bid proposals. And then they talk amongst their firm and see kind of the recommendation of these companies. Um, so we definitely take that into, um, into account when, when they ultimately give their recommendation for approval for these companies.
Yeah, and we did, we did not have, just, we, we discussed, we wanted to spend money for, on the bridge repair, but we didn't have those quotes at that time.
One more thing too, I will say, what we're seeing right now with a lot of these bid openings, it's a wide range.
They, they want the works they bid.
One this morning for the, um, sanitary and storm sewer open cut project that's been discussed too. Six hundred thousand dollar difference from lowest to highest.
Same.
You know, you get companies who just kind of throw out high in the sky numbers and hey, if no one else submits a bid, then we're going to make a lot of money.
Uh, Councilmember Hauser?
You know, either Alec or Nick, you know, when we talk about public contracting, does the city require that the contractor post payment of performance bonds if it's over a certain threshold amount, over fifty thousand dollars? Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure. So if there was a default, you would call the performance bond and they would finish, et cetera. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember King, anything else?
Thank you.
And all these types of projects, big dollar number and they're not, you know, exciting projects.
Not glamorous.
So trust me, I know it's, I don't want Kevin to go up here and ask for those kind of projects, but they're really important.
They're important. Nobody wants bridges collapsing.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Exhale's consideration of the yearly renewal of the outdoor dining agreements. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, um, Mayor. So prior to five years ago, every year I'd bring the same six outdoor dining, dining folks to, um, this council to ask to have them renewed. They still have to go through MDOT, get their permits. And at some point someone said, there's no easier way to do this. So, but we still wanted to have oversight to make sure we had the ability to not have them jam it down our throat if we didn't like what was going on. So we made, five years ago, council decided for five years, administration will make that decision. Same premise. If there's problems, if there's something needs to be relocated, administration have the right to, um, work with each individual outdoor dining person, um, or with MDOT to make adjustments if necessary, which we did. When we ended up putting the main makeover in and we did the fountain, or the, um, the, uh, well, we had to take half of Bologna's and O'Connor's outdoor dining. So we, we did negotiate that with them at that time. So, um, we're here we are after five years. Um, staff's recommendation is to go back to another five-year cycle where it will be done administratively. Same exact six people have been doing it this year. I think we're going to see four, two, three, um, bar and grill. Want to do something more for presence. They have the windows that roll up, but, and they have their outdoor deck in the back. But they said, we want people to know we're, we're cool too. So they might have six tables or that would come back through the process to the planning commission and then the city council if they're a brand new one. But in this case, our recommendation is to all six met the, um, liquor license rules. Nobody had a violation. Um, everybody maintained their infrastructure, tables, umbrellas, fencing, trash. We, we hold them to a very high standard, even to the point of umbrellas encroaching all the sidewalk. I know a lot of you don't like how crowded the sidewalks are, so we try to keep everything inside that area. Um, and there are strict rules from MDOT. When they put out the fencing, everything has to be within five, five feet away from any projection. So there's always a five-foot clear path, even though it doesn't feel like it, there is automatically. So, um, again, my recommendation would be to, um, approve this year's six, uh, same folks. And then we'll start the cycle year one, um, go back to, they pay a fee for administrative to cover our costs. And then they pay MDOT for a right-of-way permit. They have to get on their phone, submit those drawings to me. And then we stamp them and May first, they can, um, operate.
Councilmember Jones?
Um, I just, and you know this, Nick, because I sent you an email. I'm just very concerned about how much is on the sidewalks. Um, I, I know it's important for the restaurants, but you take five feet out, I mean, I have pictures here between, you know, all the, the signs that are on the sidewalk and bike racks. And we can't even have, you can't even ride a bike downtown. Um, um, I just think we really have to look at what we're doing on Main Street. Um, I know they're getting rid of some of those cement things, but they're thinking of putting new planters on. And I just feel our downtown is a lot of wrought iron and there's nineteen trash cans between University and Second Street. And that's a lot of trash cans. And I just feel like, I just washed my dog with my sister the other day and I can't tell how many times we had to stop to the side so someone could pass going the other way. You've got five feet out, all this stuff. So I think, I don't want to vote no on this. It's important, I think, for the restaurants. But in saying that, in support, I think this has to, I, I, I absolutely think those, those signs have to go away. I, I just, I, it's an obstacle course walking down Main Street. And we want our shoppers and our restaurateur growers to have lots of room to take their families down our Main Street. So.
Yes, I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so I didn't get a chance to call you today, but, um, so a couple of things. So all the wrought iron and all of the cement planters, all the bollards, even the ones that are gone now because they've been hit fifteen times and we told MDOT, we're not putting them back at three thousand dollars a bollard anymore. All that was part of the twenty twelve Main Street makeover. In order for us to get a million two grant, they made us put all these things there. They made us get custom fencing. They made us do this. They made us put all the trash cans in there. Having said that, we have a new representative from MDOT now. The one that we had was. The one that we had was wonderful, tough, tough as nails. New person's a little more willing to talk. So this is what we did. So those cement planters are way too many, way too big, way too ugly now. So I happened to find, doing some research, these new planters that are kind of parabolas almost, they're way tighter, smaller, self-watering. Bart, we have to pay Bart a ton of money every day to put forty gallons of water out in each of those planters. So these can be, they hold water for two weeks, he's ecstatic. One hose, hook them up, they're tighter, we can still get all the plants that we want there, we can put half as many. So we can take away half of the cement planters, they're half of the size of the cement planters, so you're getting it down to a quarter of what's there. The one thing I will defend, not because I like them, actually, I don't like them, but back in the early 2000s, City Council Planning Commission, from the push of the retailers, one of these A-frame signs, is part of a lot of traditional downtowns that you have these A-frame signs, because they are the only changeable copy you can do on a sign. So they can say, we're having a, we're open this day, brunch on Saturday, you can put those out. Every single night, they're supposed to come off the sidewalks, back inside, she sees likes, got a whole bunch of them now that we just started picking up. I think you would never change that rule with the restaurateurs and the business owners. That is the way they advertise. I know, and the thing that you sent me, talked about blade signs, you can't do changeable copy on blade signs. So those are called icon signs, they're only allowed to be two square feet, those are more just for a more traditional look. So bike racks, even though you can't ride your bike on Main Street, we want you to bring your bike to the side streets, walk them down, clip them to a bike rack. Part of MDOT's requirements instead, you can't take down those bike racks. If you saw what we did, we did the little poles, those are as unobtrusive as possible. Now, if you go down to Tulare, they asked for two full-on bike racks because they have a way wider sidewalk there, it's twenty-eight feet instead of fourteen, because their patrons are coming, blocking their bikes, locking them up. It's a balance between dodging and people wanting to put their bikes on Main Street. They were strapping them to the wrought iron fencing around the trees and by the benches, and scraping off all that paint, that's powder coated. So again, it's a little bit of both, I understand. Don't love the A-frames, but they do serve a purpose for the people. So that would have to go back through Planning Commission, and you'd have to rescind that, which I'll say that was your idea, but I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not going to, I know.
No, I know that, but your point will take.
There's something has to go on, whether it's the trash cans. These signs make us look trashy. I mean, really.
Yeah.
It's just.
So how about we have administration take a look and
Yes, let's do that.
Come back to us with maybe some plans.
We already talked.
Some of it we can't.
Right, some we can't, but like trash cans, we talked at staff, so we get with Carl and all the guys that empty the trash cans, where can we eliminate some? And again, back in the day, if you notice, there's round ones and square ones. They made us, MDOT made us put recycling and trash. Now, none of them are recycling, as soon as a bad piece of garbage goes in recycling, it's, so we can eliminate a lot of those because they're not being used properly. So I think we can, I think we can fix the trash cans.
Thank you, and I like the idea of maybe reviewing the sidewalks.
Yeah, some sort of.
Yeah, that's not five feet. So if they put their little A-frame sign in the five feet, we can yank it, so.
Well, and I also think there's restaurants that go and post the five feet.
I'm sure there are.
And I'm sure that you checked that, but yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you listening to me. I mean, we want as many pedestrians that can walk down Main Street as possible.
Absolutely.
And right now, it's like an obstacle course, so.
I think we can accomplish both things, yep. Okay, very good.
That's my little mission. I got my skate park now, I gotta work on some.
You're good for six months.
Put that in the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, you give a mouse a cookie, they're going to ask for a glass of milk. So yeah, I have, you know, looked at the sidewalks and been there many times, as Deb, House Member Deb has, and when you're looking at these signs, if there's a standard or something that could just make it aesthetically, more aesthetically pleasing, or just to, I mean, it does look a little, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the standard is two square feet, but again, First Amendment rights, they, we can't, unless you're Birmingham, which I don't think you could do, or Bloomfield, gold and black is all you get, no one's, people have tried that since, as of past. So it's hard to regulate that. I don't disagree, it'd be nice to have a standard sign. The whole reason they do them was catch your eye. If everybody was the same, you wouldn't catch your eye.
Creativity.
I mean, they could go fluorescent and pretty gaudy if they want, I mean, come on, it's, I mean, thank you, I appreciate you guys taking a look at that, because I know you hear a lot about a lot every day.
It's all right, it's our job. Thank you. But so, Mr. Mayor, our motion would be to extend that administrative proof for five years.
Motion?
We do not, yeah.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Counsel, motion by Councilmember Hauser, support by Councilmember Trent.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nick, does that include four-twenty-three Main?
No, that would have to come to the Planning Commission. I don't know if they'll make it till the end of the summer, because they haven't even started yet with the Planning Commission, so.
Okay.
There's a couple more behind the Eastman, but that's on private property, so again, they'll go to Planning Commission, but that wouldn't come to council. They come to council here because they're on MDOT's right-of-way. The ones on private property, they're approved in perpetuity, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next is consideration of the Metro Act right-of-way permit extension from AT&amp;T. Mr. City Manager or Mr. City Attorney?
I'll take this one, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is, I'll call it more an administrative thing, this is from AT&amp;T, and it goes back as far as when they used to be called Michigan Bell. So they've had a longstanding relationship and presence in the city. When the Metro Act, and I know we have a lot of newer city council members, the Metro Act is basically an act that was put in through, after the lobbies of the telecommunications providers, to say, hey, we're getting like a hundred different set of regulations from all the communities we work in, and they're oppressive with their fees and so forth, and so there was a long process litigation that ended up being the MPSC, the Michigan Public Service Commission, and essentially came up with the Metro Act, which is a standard set of regulations that the telecommunications providers could submit to the cities, and essentially it's a push-down, like, here's what you agree to, city, or you don't. And if you don't, then there was a number of cities that tried to push back on that before and end up being in litigation. And so we don't have generally a lot of problems with the telecommunications providers once they're in. AT, I know we do have some cable situations at times, but the telecommunications, the actual services, this one from AT&amp;T, normally what you would see is a thicker agreement that, when it's a new entity coming into town, that you go through, and, but this is a, an extension of an existing one, and it's identical. In fact, if you look at the MPSC website, this document is actually on their website with their AT&amp;T's signer's name already in it. So it's, it has definitely been a, one that is a standard form, but they're only good when they present them, they're good for five years. So this extension is verbatim from the one that the city approved, the extension, from 2011, 2014, 2019, 2024 is the next end of the five years. So they are looking for an extension of their current Metro Act right-of-way permit. So happy to answer any questions, but this is, I would say this is a pretty standard one, the city doesn't have a whole lot of wiggle room. This is definitely an indication, or an example of the loss of local control at times, and unfortunately, this is one that's been vetted and lost by others more litigious than us. So I'd ask the consideration today is to, to approve and authorize City Manager to sign on behalf of the city, the form that is in the packet.
I'll make a motion as presented by Attorney Krot.
Motion by Mayor Protem. Second by Councilmember Trent.
Yep.
Is further discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Next is consideration of the Memorial Grove, all the ability to spark bid approval as foreshadowed by Mr. Maggio. Counsel?
Do I think we have Alec?
Oh, we're going to have a pre-
A quick one, I think, yep.
Quick presentation.
Not that, not that Monday Night Raw's on there.
Little encouragement.
Like, the space up here is getting tighter and tighter. So yes, the Memorial Grove that Anthony was already talking about earlier, it's been in the works now for a couple of years, since before I came with the city. We did finally get to a point where we could do a public bid opening, and they had to do amendments to that as well, because they ended up coming in higher than our grant amounts. Those grant amounts being two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand through the DNR Trust, and then seventy-five thousand through CDPG funds. Within your packet, there is the kind of engineered site plan, and I know you were looking at kind of the conceptual drawing of that earlier. So on that engineered site plan that shows the pathways that are to be replaced using CDPG funds, and then the area where the new equipments and turf is to be placed, and we talked about earlier how it's, you know, it's not a very big area, really, the bigger playground's going to be the top lot on the other side of the river, although we're replacing those structures. This one's kind of designed more to be, I don't want to say the word passive, but a lighter playground in comparison to the other one. And I think it is set up in a way that if we want to add more units, either in that turf area or along the walkway in the grass, you know, as people walk around, that kind of oval-y kind of shape, that gives us that possibility. So the lowest bidder was JSS McComb LLC for a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents, which is within our grant amounts. AEW is recommending, again, a ten percent contingency, just in case, we don't anticipate wanting to use that money, but just having that within the city council approval to not spend more than three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents, so that would be an additional twenty-five thousand of city funds if that were to arise. Like I said, we don't anticipate it, the original bid is within the grant amount, but sometimes you run into things you don't anticipate.
Very good. Counsel?
I have a question.
Mayor Protem Sylvia.
So Alec, in looking at these bids, and if you look at some of the physical play items, you know, like the Cruiser, the Music Center, there is a difference going across these. Were they given the specs in the bid, it said, you know, go to the company, I noticed it was in Ohio, and you've got this piece of playground equipment? Why would there be a difference? Did they have lower, like, volume pricing because they're a bigger contractor?
No, they were, they were given the specs of the equipment from, it was that or something equivalent, if they could find the equivalent pieces.
Okay, so it could be from a different supplier of that piece of playground equipment, but it would meet the specs that are in the packet? Okay. And then, as we talked about earlier, clearly, it's, you know, if I think if you take the contingencies out, the non-equipment is, you know, almost sixty percent of the cost of this project. So doing the prep area, that's where the money is being spent, I mean, eighty-six to ninety-four thousand dollars is for turf. That's, that's where, I guess that's where the money is in playground equipment, because if you look at some of these items, you can get some cool stuff for not a ton of money, but the underground is expensive.
And it's got to be safe.
Got to be safe.
If you hit the ground.
You're right, if you hit the ground, good point.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, what am I making a motion on? To approve this as presented by DPW Director, and we are giving the bid to JSS McComb. Do we need to have a not to exceed?
Three-twenty-five, right?
Not to exceed three-twenty-five. That would be three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Motion by Mayor Protem.
They were asking for, weren't they asking for a ten percent contingency?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the two-eighty-five plus the, yes.
Sorry.
Gets you a three-twenty-five, yeah.
We have a second?
Oh, support.
Councilmember Trent, second. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Alec. Next is receipt of the check register reports. Any questions? On now to receive report from the various boards and commission. First is a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Jones.
I did not attend, but she gave me a write-up.
Okay.
Marilyn was there, so she can fill in if I missed. Marilyn Trent attended and talked to us about designing some of the Monarch Pledge Fund, donating, right, or designing?
Yeah, donating.
Donate some of the pledge money that was raised by Rochester Pollinators to the garden in honor of Justin, who was killed in the Oxford shooting. The city still holds the money from when the Pollinators was a subgroup of CBC. She also talked to us about mini forests and some areas that we could consider to implement them in the future. One set of cornhole has been approved, and the City Parks Department people have staked out an area for the placement by the volleyball courts. We reviewed the mural applications and have chosen our winner. The artist is Chelsea Henson-Bergen of Washington, Michigan. She submitted a sketch with four seasons. I've asked her to submit a more detailed sketch of at least one season, so I can forward it to you for City Council's approval and review. I should have that by Monday, she sent it to me, and then she did a mock-up of the rough sketches, and Colin and I measured out the Kiwanis Building to make sure it worked. We decided they would be mounted at the higher option. So she sent this the other day, if you want to pass it down, though, there is the-
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to bring that, it-
Can we, do we get it in another meeting?
Janine got a little ahead of us, so I said, I want, this is our property, I want council to approve all four sketches. I know they picked them, there is a lot of people.
So they cannot pick at this. It's beautiful.
Hold on until we get them on.
It is beautiful, though.
It's beautiful.
So May 12th, I'll bring them back to you, huh?
It's, for the public, it's beautiful, yeah.
Don't look. That's it, that's it, that's it for me.
I've got a, just a really quick question about that. I saw the stakes out there for the cornhole. With respect to the bags, is that, can it bring your own, is there going to be stuff out there?
It's bring your own.
Okay.
Oh, I thought there were bags out there, we were going to put a little box that we-
BYOB. Yeah, they've been going back and forth, but-
I thought it was going to be out there.
Maybe they changed that since I talked to them.
And then there'll be a box that say, kindly, please put them back. And then maybe if they're stolen, you bring your own.
Yeah, that was the initial, okay.
We give it a try.
Got you, okay. Thanks.
Next is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee. Councilmember Trent?
Well, I would say, I would like to say, though, that being on the Budget Committee, that they are wonderful, Anthony and Marcy are wonderful to work with, and that everything in here was, many times, has come from discussions at the Budget Committee, and including cost-saving summaries for each department, which Marcy and Anthony will nod their head, even though who knows how long this took them to do their cost-saving summaries of each department, and I truly appreciate them going that extra mile with that, and keep on smiling.
Thanks. And next is a report from the DDA, which I think we've heard a lot from the DDA.
We have, but there were a few things that were missed, and I've got them right here. Don Sinkowitz from the Historical Commission has been discussing historical plaques, and I would encourage people to go to the RochesterMI.org website if you have a house that's over 50 years old. And I do, so I did that today. So I mean, Don, I did it, if you're listening. I put my application in, and it's, yeah.
Fifty years.
It's not a long time. I mean, when I was younger, I thought it was a really long time, but it's not a long time.
My house is 100 years old, so do I get two?
That's right. Yeah, you better get it in. So I'm gonna come knocking on your door. So May 4th is Farmer's Market Opening Day, and it's the 25th anniversary, so do not miss it. And if you get there in time, you'll get a free canvas bag, you know? I think they have like 500 of them. There is the deck art is coming up on May 9th and 10th. The Heritage Festival is coming up on May 25th and 26th, and bringing the whole family. They're bringing back, the DDA is bringing back the volunteer appreciation event, so that's coming back. They had stopped because of COVID. Sidewalk sales are July 18, 19, and 20. Rochester Business Update Presentation will be July 22nd at the Royal Park. Dancing in the Streets is July 19th. And we discussed the Grams, so we don't need to discuss that again. And Christie also said that she had attended the Oakland County DEI workshop, and it was, she thought it, she thought it was well done and learned a lot. And Smart Buses, 6:00 AM to midnight, folks. They launched the Smart Bus routes.
All right. Thank you. Next is a report from Ra-Ra. Councilmember King.
My first meeting with them. Just really enlightening, just everything that Ra-Ra does, all the activities and sports and camps that they offer and all the great things that they bring to the community. Couple of things just wanted to highlight. We were looking at offering, signing the lease with Coleman Golf, which if anybody knows them, Kelly Coleman, she runs a golf program for kids and I think adults as well. My kids have participated. The outdoor program she runs out of Twin Lakes, and she's been in a different space before, but she's gonna be bringing in a golf simulator. So they're gonna dedicate one of the rooms there for her for golf simulator. It'll have year-round usage. So something new that they're gonna be doing. They're working on a comp study, just making sure that, you know, I think this was an exercise that Rochester, Rochester Hills had participated in as well. They somehow did not get included in the first round, but they're gonna be doing that just to make sure what they're paying is, you know, kind of market for their roles for the employees of Ra-Ra. They are gonna be doing a new entryway for the building. Right now, there's a lot of like water issues whenever it rains, puddling. There's gonna be a nice, really modern slanted roof extension that'll come out, so you'll have a nice dry space to enter the building, and then hopefully divert some of the water away from kind of where it's been puddling in the parking lot there in the entryway. And then there's also going to be a mom's night out. They applied for a licensing, a licensing for alcohol for that. I don't know the date of it, though. I didn't get that. So something new that they're doing. They do parents' nights out where you can drop your kids and go out, but this is actually for moms to come to get together. So I thought that was something cool, something different that they've been doing. So I think those were the the big things, and then I'm gonna be assigned to a couple subcommittees, Human Resources and the Policy and Procedures Committees. So I'm towards that.
Very good. Thank you. It's a public comment. Brian, any any public comment?
Thank you. There is none.
Thank you. Thank you for being there, Brian.
Ah, so come on.
It's kind of dark.
Any comments from the gallery or the department heads back there? Thank you all for staying tonight. Onto General miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Anthony, for sitting in for me last meeting. My wife and I figured out it was our first vacation ever by ourselves without the kids. I didn't know that, but you have 30, how old is them, 35 years? We always had the kids with us somehow, even as adults, so that was pretty cool. And staff was so respectful and all of you, thank you. That was a great eight days. Naples can't go wrong, right? So, whoo, royal scoop three times, but that's another story. So you're all invited, if you can make it, no pressure. Thursday, we're celebrating Arbor Day, so the Tree Committee and the City Beautiful together, we're gonna plant the tree by the War Memorial. Mr. Brulitic, they're working on redoing that. So in that, in honor of that, we're gonna, there's a dead tree that was there, taking that down, relocating another tree, and we're gonna plant a brand-new Autumn Blaze Maple at 10 o'clock. So we invited veterans. We got it on the website. We've reached out to some organizations. So anywhere that shows up, it's it's very informal, but we'll talk a little bit about what that means and what a great location. And with the upgrade of that area, a new tree will be something really cool. So 10 o'clock on Thursday. Planning Commission is having some very robust agendas coming up. So some of this development's extremely exciting, including May 6th, so anybody that's watching, the Solar Onyx will have the public hearing. So there's been great communication between developers and the residents, but still people have concerns. So that night will be the first shot for a public hearing with that full presentation on from our consultant as well as the developer. So that will be going on. There's two or three really big projects that are going on. That's exciting. Newsletter, Megan, staff did a great job. Wait, wait till you see it. It's like extra pages. It's beautiful. So that should be out, it's at the printer. So it's got everything you can imagine. We went to, again, just too robust, I use the word again, but robust, fall, winter, and spring, summer, and I think you get everything you can in those two notifications. So those are coming out. We're excited about that. And I think that's it.
Mr. Banda, with respect to the May 6th Planning Commission meeting, Solar Onyx will be there. If my memory is correct, there will also be the public hearing for the short-term rental ordinance. Is that right?
Wow.
Yeah.
Is that, do we set up?
We did. So it's gonna be a big docket there. Is there a way that we can, however, who, I don't know who sets the agenda up, but is there a way to make it efficient, so we do the short-term rental one first and then the or whatever one you think is best? I don't, I don't-
I don't know if you want, if there's, yeah, I'll think about that, but normally you don't want people sitting around for that. You want, the Solar Onyx is, we know there's gonna be a lot of activity, I'm talking, let's just do that first.
Read the crowd.
But we'll read the crowd, exactly.
That's perfectly fine. I just, that's a big issue, too, so that May 6th will be a full attendant. All right.
Jeremy, that's right, that's the public game for that. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else in that public hearing for Planning Commission? I mean, anything, though, just those two?
Yeah, the June's when it really cranks up. There's three big projects, so.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Look in your emails. I sent out the boards and commissions list along with the applications that I've received up to now. So the nominations for those will be on your next agenda on May 13th.
Good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember King?
Not tonight.
Mayor Protem, Salvia.
Just another reminder about the Arbor Day event, and I did check on Google Maps. So if you're wondering where that location is, if you put in the Rochester World War II Veterans Honor Roll, it will take you directly to where we're gonna be planting a tree. It's right here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's right outside.
People don't know what that is.
Okay, that is true.
That's why I went to Google Maps.
Good for you.
Because Google knows. And then the other thing is, people are really excited about the bookstores coming to downtown Rochester. Two that have their signs up and potentially three at part of the cheese shop, so.
Oh, really?
You know, what I say about the bookstores coming is the fact that you can't have Hallmark come to a movie unless you have bookstores. And now we're gonna have three bookstores, so now Hallmark can come.
There you go.
That's all I have.
That's pretty good. Councilmember Jones.
A couple of things. With the opening of the Farmer's Market, Ra-Ra has a pancake breakfast, so go to the Farmer's Market, and then you can go over and eat breakfast at. Thank you for Chief for allowing us to to use the facility again. Authors in April with RCS is starting. The week that the authors are here is 4/29 through 5/3. We are the only district in the United States that does this. It's a huge deal. So we bring in four authors, and these are really well-known children's authors. It's an amazing week. They go to every school, they talk to the children, they sign books. And this week, starting on the 20th through 27th, there's a scavenger hunt downtown for the kids, and then the authors are gonna be signing. There's a party at the library on May 1. So if you have children or not, it's wonderful. They have a banquet, and then they, it's all adults, pretty much, so the authors get really honest and fun to listen to. It's a great banquet. I am working with Frank Riewald on the Lions Park, so I'm super excited to figure out that one. I went to the Lions meeting tonight to try and get some history, and it is a moving target on that park, I have got to tell you. There's an elderly man that's gonna get a hold of me, but he said they started that park because the Rotary had a park and they wanted a park, and so that is why they got the park, and they did all that building and everything. He said that they did the gazebo. Lots of rumors about who did the gazebo. Anyway, so it, just finding out the history of this park has been fun. But Frank Riewald is drumming up the funding to do the park. We're hoping for a little bit of a stage-type of situation and can do some storytimes there with the library, and we're super excited about the Lions Park. And then, I feel like there's one other thing. That's the Lions Park. Okay, that might be it, if I think, but I'll circle back. Go ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Trent.
Well, I have a couple of things. So I did, we had a dementia-friendly meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they had a discussion regarding the Home Safe Rochester, which is going to be in our newsletter about that program, which is free ID bracelets for people who have dementia or other memory issues. It distributed, and they'll be distributed in May, is my understanding. Home Safe Rochester allows registrations of loved ones, emergency information with the Rochester Fire and Police. It provides support for those with early stages of dementia to ensure a quick and safe return home. And they say that it helps visually identify the lost individuals that make contact with citizens and law enforcement. So they're doing a lot of work, the city is doing a lot of work with that. And it'll include contact details accessible via a QR code on the bracelet. So that's really cool. And then to give a little more detail on my visit to the City Beautiful Commission requesting to transfer funds from the Butterfly Pledge, it is for the, it is to the Pollyann Trail Management Council, who we met, who I met with, with Braden Quisenberry, who's a Capstone Project Senior, who has taken on this project for this small strip of land in the village of Rochester along the Pollyann Trail that's 12 feet by 100 feet in memory of Justin Schilling. And so the, when Braden and I went to present to to the Pollyann Trail Management Council, they wanted to thank the City of Rochester for partnering with them on this, on this garden. And we will be asking for volunteers to help do this, and the, so that's, that's what we're gonna be doing with that. So I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that. That's what, that's what the project is, and they couldn't be more grateful, so, especially the mother, who said that her son was, he loved nature, and he was quite a wonderful individual, so, yeah.
Mayor, before you go to Christian, sorry, I remembered what the other thing was. Sorry. So we are gonna be opening up the concession stand by the softball field, so I'm super excited about that. Ra-Ra will be staffing it, stocking it, and Alec has agreed to do a little sweeping. They're gonna do a little sweeping in there and get it open, and I'm super fired up about using the fields more. I've been meeting with Dave, and how do we make that a robust, more of a robust area than it has been?
When does the concession stand open?
It opens in June.
June, okay.
So coming soon. They have T-ball Monday through Friday, so it'll for sure be open during that, and hopefully we can get some, some other softball teams in there, but so, I'm excited.
Wow, good job.
Well, we used to have, you know, the ice cream shop, right, behind B&amp;G?
I know.
And that's been gone a long time, so it seems like that would be very popular when people coming from the park.
100%, yeah, even off the trail. I know Anthony or somebody was saying this. You know, you could put a little sign, concessions is where.
No signs, Debbie.
One of those signs on Main Street, I'm gonna move over there.
Take them all. There'll be like 10, 10 signs of ice cream.
Lights and sparkles.
Absolutely.
Have it both ways.
Thank you for letting me interrupt.
And skateboard people can get ice cream.
I'm even thinking the concession stand, once the skateboard opens, the concession stand will probably have more traffic. That whole area hopefully will be robust, so, thank you. Sorry, Christian.
Councilmember, Councilmember Hauser.
Sure. Just a couple of things, and, you know, I'm gonna try and dovetail these two points that were discussed earlier tonight, is I think one of the biggest takeaways that I got from Anthony's presentation about the budget, and when I was going through these documents, is that we surpassed, as a city, the $1 billion mark on the total taxable value of our city property. And to me, that's just mind-blowing. And it just shows how valuable of a resource we have in these, what, 3.2 square miles, you know? And how much we are fortunate to have that kind of benefit here. So again, that that number just blows my mind, and I think it kind of goes into something else. And I know we're all very passionate about certain things here, you know, whether, and I'm not trying to be silly, whether it's the the bike racks or butterflies or or street signs or whatever, and if you guys haven't picked up on it, for me, it's, it's about the condition of our properties, both commercial and residential, and really making sure that our landlords and our property owners maintain that level of appearance and aesthetic and quality that we we have on the books. And I've spoken to city manager, and I spoke to chief, and I've talked to my colleagues about some properties that have caught my eye, and, and they've been very, very helpful in making sure that those are gonna get addressed. I have all the reason to believe that that's gonna happen. But as we come out of winter and we start to get a little bit more foot traffic, I think this would be a really good opportunity, and, and I believe there was a program in the past, I don't know if this is for certain, but we're a city administration, whether it was code enforcement, the DDA, would kind of go up and down and left and right and take a look and see what properties maybe needed to to be brought current or, you know, for lack of a better term, brought into compliance. And I'm sure there's, there's several around, and I just want the chief to know, I want Mr. Banda to know, and I want my colleagues to know, that this is something I take very seriously, and I'm more than happy to to do whatever it is, and I would ask my colleagues also to support the city manager and the Code Enforcement Department to to provide the input, the support, financial assistance, whatever we can do to give Chief and his team the resources available. It's a big city, although it's 3.2, there's still a lot of properties. I know they've got other things on their docket to have to do, but to me, this is such